In Buffalo, New York, the community is holding vigils to honor the 10 people killed in last Saturday's racist massacre. President Biden and the First Lady traveled there yesterday to talk with the families of the victims.
Tillman, I bring you this message from deep in our nation's soul. In America, evil will not win, I promise you. Hate will not prevail, and white supremacy will not have the last word.
Earlier, I spoke with NPR's Cheryl Corley, who is following this story in Buffalo.
Well, the president said he came to Buffalo to stand with the community and to grieve with the families of the victims, and he met with them privately before giving a public speech. And during that speech, he called out the names of the 10 people who died and the three who were wounded, offering some details about their lives. And that shooting occurred at the Tops Grocery Store in a predominantly black neighborhood. And the president called the white supremacy that the 18-year-old suspect espoused in his writings a poison.
What happened here is simple and straightforward. Terrorism, terrorism, domestic terrorism, violence inflicted in the service of hate and the vicious thirst for power.
And the president told Americans that they should reject what he said were lies, told for profit and political gain.
And how did the community respond to his visit, to his words?
Well, the reaction was pretty mixed. There were lots of people who lined up outside the community center where President Biden spoke. Sean Collier was one of them, a General Motors factory worker. He was glad the president came. He said the visit was part of the healing that Buffalo needs, and he appreciated Biden coming, especially to speak with the victims' families.
Approaching their hurt and their pain and their anguish, and then the community pain and anguish, was the first step.
Now, he didn't say very much about gun control, right?
Well, he made a passing reference to keeping military-style weapons off the streets. And he alluded to his 1994 crime bill that banned assault weapons, saying the country was able to do that in the past. Some said they didn't expect the president to talk about gun reforms because he doesn't have enough votes in Congress to make that happen. Another said it just wasn't the right time to talk about it. Local activist Tanika Simmons said the president needed to talk specifically, though, about what the government would do to combat hate crimes.
I mean, how can we heal when we are being hunted? We are living in fear. I have anxiety leaving my house because I don't know what's going to happen to me.
The 18-year-old who walked into that supermarket and started shooting has already been charged. What happens next?
Well, he has a court date tomorrow morning. For now, he faces a single count of first-degree murder. More charges from the county district attorney are expected. And investigators are going over a lengthy document that he posted online, and there is a federal investigation underway, so he may face federal hate crime charges.
And before this grocery store opened in this area, the one where this attack happened, this mostly-black neighborhood was a food desert, right? So the fact that it's closed is yet another blow. When will it reopen? What are residents doing in the meantime?
Well, there's no indication that it will reopen anytime soon, and the store is offering a shuttle bus service to take people elsewhere.
NPR's Cheryl Corley in Buffalo, thank you so much.
Mari, who didn't wish to give his last name, lives just around the corner from the Tops on Jefferson Avenue.
Me and my son come to Tops every day to get him a snack or something.
He says he probably missed Saturday's mass shooting there by about five minutes.
I was coming down the street, coming to go to Tops, and I seen all these cops coming.
Mari and other neighborhood residents were still gathered outside Tops more than six hours after an 18-year-old male with a white supremacist manifesto shot 13 mostly-black victims, killing 10.
Whatever this guy had on his mind, he completed it today. And this is the way we have to ask ourselves, what next?
34-year-old Michael Walker lamented that Buffalo was now the site of one of the deadliest incidents of racial violence in recent U.S. history.
This is their Emmett Till moment. This is their, some people say, George Floyd. This is their George Floyd moment. So for what to happen to us, now we're a part, unfortunately, a part of that list.
Walker also lamented that the shooting took place at one of the few grocery stores on the city's predominantly black east side, parts of which are considered food deserts by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Walker says it will take an engaged public, holding elected officials accountable, to prevent another incident like Saturday's.
But as long as we keep doing the same thing, we're just sitting ducks for the next mass shooting. That's all you can say.
A prayer vigil was planned for Sunday morning outside Tops. Tom Dinkie, WBFO News.
Context of White Supremacy. Gus T. Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, May 19, 2022. So I have been told. This is the 10-year anniversary of the Cow's Book Club, and it might even be 10 years to the month. I have to go back to double-check, but I think we actually began the book club in May of 2011. I have to go back to make sure that that's accurate with Dr. Marimba Anis Yarugu. Hopefully, we've covered important material. All I can say is, I think this will be one of the most important book club sessions we have done. Dylan Storm Roof from 2015. As a result of that act, within a couple of days, we read Stephen Cantrowitz, Ben Tillman, and the Reconstruction of White Supremacy. So many listeners, and I mean, that is just an old, musty, dusty history book, biography even. Not anything flashy, no pictures, just straight South Carolina history and white supremacy. And we've had so many listeners over the years mention, talk about, reference that program, even recently, where they went back in the archives and listened and said that they got something. The threat of Negro domination hangs over us like the sword of Damocles. So many times, and so many quotes, but man, that was so important. We learned so much, and context, there is a reason that this here broadcast is called the Context of White Supremacy. Racist man, racist woman, racist child, one of their main weapons to keep us confused is to make sure we do not have any historical context to understand. We were just talking about understanding the big picture. If you lack historical context, you will always miss the big picture. Everyone in the world right now, I don't say everyone, but I mean, all over the world, it is being discussed and has been for about the last four or five days. Buffalo, New York, people who didn't even know anything about Buffalo, had never heard of Buffalo, New York. Buffalo, New York, Peyton Gendron. 10 people, mostly black, killed, 13 people shot in total. White supremacy racism. How in the world do we go almost an entire week in The New York Times and CNN, PBS, every -- hey, let's put this event into perspective. Nah, nah, you don't want to do that. Gun control and social media. This here should be a shining illustration of the importance of reading when Dr. Frances Cresswellzing, when she says, "Reading is more important than watching television." Man, I have been so excited for the book club ever since I decided we were going to read this on Sunday, hours after the shooting. And the symmetry. Now, we just concluded last week with Essie Mae Washington Williams and all that talk about Ben Tillman and Strom Thurmond, but last week, we ended with President Joe Biden. Now, at the time, it was Sander doing the eulogy for Strom Thurmond. Heard his whole eulogy last week. We go, and him talking about all the progress and change in the man, Strom Thurmond. Now, we get to pick up this week with him, some 20 years later, talking about that same so-called poison of white supremacy. Incidentally, the connections to last week aren't just with President Biden. There was a lot of discussion in Dear Senator about food. Strom Thurmond lived to 101. None of the victims at Tops got that far. But Strom Thurmond lived till almost 101. My apologies, he was close, died at 100. But he talked all that about eating good food and vegetables and all that. Hey, this area of Buffalo where the Negroes reside already, what they call a food desert, now you got one fewer places to shop, even less of a chance of you getting some healthy food. Don't have to eat fried chicken in McDonald's all the time. Incidentally, the last segment before we get to, or two things, and then we'll get to the audio. Number one, I was forced to play that segment. They spoke with a victim of white supremacy, Michael Walker. Victims guaranteed qualified, but he said this is our Emmett Till moment. And that really stuck with me. He included George Floyd and all that. We're now on that list, these heinous acts of white terrorism. Number one, the entire known universe is on that list. If you knew enough about what's happened in that area, whether it's a sundown town, whether it's an area where they killed a whole lot of black people, or poisoned the air, or don't hire any black people, or whatever, the entire known universe is on that list. Now, specifically, it really bothered me because going at, a white man going into a supermarket and killing as many black people as possible is not a so-called Emmett Till moment. And in fact, hey, Buffalo was already on that list. How do you not know about the 22-caliber killer? How is he not referenced? Joseph G. Christopher, white man, did the exact same thing in the exact same town. We don't need to go all the way to Mississippi because that's part of the same way that we normally, in a very confused way, talk about racism. It's very limited. It's something down in the South, or maybe police brutality. No, 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 no. This is an entire system, food deserts and all. And we don't have to go anywhere. Buffalo, as I said, the 22-caliber killer. The book that we are reading, thankfully, on the book club, Absolute Madness, A True Story of a Serial Killer, Race, and a City Divided. Catherine Pelanero, white woman, suspected racist, published in 2017. She is a New York Times bestselling author. That's the book that we're reading. I had never heard of this book or even, you know, heard of this author. I just remembered these events from the 1980s and went to do some digging immediately to see if there was a book, and bang, so here we are. I am so excited because we will be able to study and learn about this event while real-time we are studying and getting more information about Peyton Gendron, because it seems like it's one in the same. Hopefully, in so doing, we'll have a better historical context, and we can ask some serious questions. Now, hey, nobody else heard this book, no one else read this book, none of the white people at CNN, PBS, New York Times, LA Times, Buffalo News, none of them could put this in context? Christopher, Joseph G. Christopher, Peyton Gendron? Come on, man. We've even got non-white people who are alive, who were alive during the 1980s. They should even have a memory, recollection of all of this, to be able to share and all the rest of it. Maybe they forgot. And, and again, as Mr. Fuller says, confused about racism. Hey, a whole lot of things we forget very easily. Anywho, for folks, this is their first time maybe hearing about these events, Buffalo, New York, and New York in general, late, or excuse me, early 1980s. This report is from the New York Times, and I was able to do my research in advance, especially since I didn't have to narrate. I just went and hung out at the university library, and oh my, they have so many resources. This is just to get us, you know, on the path of what to expect. So this is from the New York Times, April 26, 1981. Inquiry on killings shifted to Georgia. Links sought between four city deaths and soldier suspect in slaying of eight black males upstate. New York City detectives investigating the fatal stabbing of three black males and a Hispanic man in midtown Manhattan last December 22nd flew to Fort Benning, Georgia yesterday to inquire about a 25-year-old white Army private who is a possible suspect in the slings of eight black males in Buffalo and Rochester last year. I'm just skipping down a little bit in the report, give a little bit more of the flair. The 12 homicides in the three cities began in Buffalo on September 22nd, when four men were shot in the head by a gunman who struck without provocation. Witnesses said the assailant was a white man with dirty blond hair who appeared to be in his mid-30s. Ballistic tests found that victims were all shot with the same 22-caliber pistol. On October 8 and 9, two black Buffalo taxi cab drivers were slain, and their hearts We don't need an Emmett Till moment. Buffalo is just having another moment of white supremacy racism. We will get started. Absolute Madness. Catherine Pelanero. Context of White Supremacy, audio segment number one.
Brilliant Audio presents the unabridged recording of Absolute Madness, A True Story of a Serial Killer, Race, and a City Divided by Catherine Pelanero, performed by Laurel Note to reader. The portrayal of people and events in this story was at all times done as accurately as possible, drawn from primary sources and a wide variety of records and supplemental source material that was corroborated and cross-referenced to whatever extent possible. Dialogue is taken either directly from written records, in which case, original spelling and punctuation have been left intact, or is constructed from recollections of persons who were present when conversations took place. In some instances, pseudonyms have been used or names omitted to preserve privacy. For my father, Salvatore J. Pelanero. Buffalo, New York Police Department, 1968 to 2002. United States Marine Corps, 1962 to 1967. Here's health to you and to our corps, which we are proud to serve. In many a strife, we fought for life and never lost our nerve. If the Army and the Navy ever look on heaven's scenes, they will find the streets are guarded by United States Marines. Part One. The 22-caliber Killer. Racism is man's gravest threat to man, the maximum of hatred for a minimum of reason. Abraham Joshua Heschel. Chapter One. Monday, September 22nd, 1980. The gunshots were so loud, one of the witnesses said later, and so fast, the four cracking pops coming rapidly, one after the other. It sounded as if someone were setting off firecrackers on her front lawn. Kids around here sometimes did that, especially around the Fourth of July. But July had come and gone. It was now late September, and the nighttime summer shenanigans had ceased, returning the neighborhood to its normal after-dark quiet. Looking out the window, she could see nothing but her own startled reflection, due to the lights inside and the darkness beyond. She took a few quick steps, opened the door, and stepped out on the porch, the light from her home spilling onto the small front lawn. The yard was silent, undisturbed, empty except for the faded lawn ornaments and a fresh "Go Buffalo" bill sign staked in the grass. She saw no pops or flashes of firecrackers, no group of rowdy kids. At first, she saw no one at all, until her eyes were drawn to light and movement in the distance. The light came from the tall overhead lamps in the parking lot of the Tops Grocery Store, directly across the street from her house, brighter and casting a wider beam than the aging streetlights that lined the block. The movement came from a single person, a slight figure who suddenly darted through an opening in the fence that separated the parking lot from her street, Floss Avenue. The man, she had the impression it was a male, wore a dark-hooded jacket. As he emerged from the fence, he ran across Floss Avenue in her direction. Veering to his left, he pulled the hood tighter around his head as he ran up Floss toward East Delavan Avenue, disappearing past darkened houses. It all happened very quickly. The witness, whose name was Barbara Wozniak, and who didn't realize at the time that she was in fact a witness to something of importance, remained at her door for a moment longer, staring in the direction where the man had run. Nothing happened. There was no one around. All was quiet again. Directly south of her home sat Genesee Street, a main thoroughfare that ran all the way from downtown Buffalo through the east side of the city and out to the suburbs. Even Genesee Street seemed unusually still. Then again, it was 10:00 PM, or close to it, on a Monday night, a school night, and it had been raining on and off for hours, hardly the kind of weather for strolling or sitting on the porch. The peaceful stillness that had now returned was more typical than the odd popping sounds and the figure running off into the dark. Barbara assumed he was some kid who had set off firecrackers in the parking lot, and she didn't give it much thought, particularly with the silence that followed. The rising crime rate around the neighborhood had made residents a bit more alert, but this seemed inconsequential. She went back inside, closing her front door against the drizzle and the dark, and returned to watching Monday Night Football with her brother. By the time the sirens shrieked and the news vans arrived, Barbara Wozniak had all but forgotten about the firecrackers, and she didn't make a connection between the figure in the hoodie and the sudden commotion in the Tops parking lot. Despite what Barbara Wozniak would eventually tell them about the loudness of the gunshots, police were not finding anyone at the scene who had heard them at all. The entrance to the Tops Grocery Store was less than 50 feet from where the Buick Century sedan was parked. Lieutenant William Mistle and Patrolman Warren Lewis pulled into the parking lot in car L12E at 9:50 PM, no more than two or three minutes after hearing the call from dispatch. Lieutenant Mistle and Officer Lewis were assigned to Precinct 12. The shooting had occurred within the boundaries of the neighboring 16th precinct, but Mistle and Lewis had responded because of both the serious nature of the call and the location in particular. This Tops Market regularly employed off-duty police officers as security guards. Mistle's first thought was that this must be an officer-involved shooting. Either a police officer had shot someone, or been shot himself. Alvin Pastolka was waiting in the parking lot and waved the blue-and-white police cruiser over to where the Buick Century was parked, by the fence that divided the lot from residential Floss Avenue. Pastolka was a police officer out of a precinct in South Buffalo, but worked security at this Tops on the east side of the city as a second front job. As Pastolka explained to Lieutenant Mistle, he had not been involved in the shooting, nor had he witnessed it. A young man had run into the store and told him that someone had been shot outside. Despite having been just inside the store entrance, Al Pastolka had not heard any gunshots or anything else out of the ordinary before the young man had rushed in to tell him of the shooting. He had seen this same young man exit the store only a minute before, and had therefore been a little suspicious, wondering at first if this was some sort of ruse to get him outside. Pastolka had followed the young man to the green Buick Century, where he observed the victim, another young male, sitting in the driver's seat. Seeing that the young man in the Buick had indeed been shot, Pastolka had rushed into the store and told the manager to call 911 before returning to the lot to stand watch over the victim, who was unresponsive. Peering inside the Buick, Lieutenant Mistle noted that the young man had been shot at least once in the left side of his face. The blood had thickened already, but the victim, eyes wide open and pupils dilated, was still trying to breathe. Mistle radioed for an ambulance and a tow truck and told dispatch to notify homicide and the evidence unit. Detective John Reagan arrived within minutes of the call and noted right away that the Buick looked brand-new, a 1980, or possibly even one of the first 1981 models, fresh off an assembly line in Detroit. Even in the dark, the exterior looked sleek, unblemished, and the interior was pristine, except for the fresh, heavy bloodstains that soaked the upper portion of the driver's seat and headrest. The driver's window was open, as it must have been when the shooting occurred. There was no broken glass anywhere. There were, however, some shell casings, one on the ground, one on the driver's side floor, and one on the rear seat of the Buick. To Detective Reagan, they looked like shells from a 22-caliber firearm of some kind. No weapon was present. It seemed that the shell casings were all that had been left behind from the shooting, aside from the bloody Buick Century, and of course, the victim, an unconscious black male with multiple gunshot wounds to the head. This was not the scenario John Reagan had expected. Reagan and his partner, Detective Melvin Lobbit, had just settled down in front of the TV set at the 13th precinct, eating a late dinner of submarine sandwiches and watching Monday Night Football, when the call came in of a man shot in the Tops parking lot at 2094 Genesee Street. Details from the radio call had been sparse. Male in vehicle with gunshot wound to the head, no mention of an arrest. Reagan had figured it was a suicide. The organized gang violence that exploded on urban streets in the 1980s and 90s had not yet come. In 1980, it made sense to assume a lone male found shot in a car likely meant a suicide, more so now perhaps than ever before, given Buffalo's dire and ever-worsening economic crisis. Another depressed guy, out of work and out of hope. It wasn't uncommon for suicides to happen this way, lives taken in parked cars or motel rooms to spare family members from finding the body. After arriving at the scene, however, Reagan immediately realized that this was not a despondent soul who had decided to end it all. Someone else had made that decision. Multiple bullets had struck him in the face and head, fired at close range, intended to kill. Whoever the shooter was, and whatever had led up to the murder, the fact he hadn't bothered to pick up his shell casings was a plus for investigators. The task now for Detectives John Reagan and Melvin Lobbit was to find out exactly what had happened. From the start, getting any useful information proved a challenge. The people closest to it all, the ones inside the Tops Market, and eventually, in desperation, police would track down every soul who had been there that night, had heard nothing at all. Despite the proximity, not a single employee or patron had been aware of what was happening outside, least of all Larry Robinson, the young man who had alerted Officer Pastolka. Robinson now sat shaking in the drizzly night air, speaking as calmly as he could with police. "I don't know what happened," Larry said, looking at the official faces standing above him. John Reagan noted how Robinson rubbed his forehead, as if he were trying to... John Reagan noted how Robinson rubbed his forehead, as if he were trying to rub out what he had seen in the Buick. Who could blame him? To Detective Reagan's veteran eye, there was no evasiveness here, no disingenuous performance. Larry Robinson was genuinely shaken to the core. "I don't know what happened. He was fine. We were talking. I went inside the store." Larry paused. He seemed to be trying to make sense of it himself. "I don't know what happened," he repeated. "I didn't even know anything was wrong until I saw the blood." An hour earlier, Larry Robinson had been on his way here, the Tops Market on Genesee Street. Larry was twenty-four years old. He lived nearby. He had been walking near the intersection of Genesee and Fillmore when he saw Glenn drive by in the Buick. Larry had waved, and Glenn had pulled over and offered him a ride. Glenn agreed to take him to Tops, where Larry planned to withdraw some money at the store's service counter. Glenn, the young man whose hearts paramedics were now furiously trying to restart, was only an acquaintance, Larry told police. "Just a guy from the neighborhood." "How old is he?" Larry didn't know. "Where was he coming from?" Larry didn't know that either. Like he kept telling them, Glenn was just someone he knew from the block, one of those guys who's always just around. They didn't travel in the same circles, nor did they have the same friends. But you get to know people's names and faces when they live in your neighborhood. Where Glenn lived was about the only solid detail Larry could offer. He gave them an address and added that he thought Glenn lived with his parents. An officer was dispatched to the home. Glenn Dunn did indeed live with his parents. Glenn was only fourteen years old. He had just begun his freshman year at nearby Kensington High School. Larry Robinson meanwhile explained to Detective Reagan and colleagues that he had only accepted the ride from Glenn because of the car. It was really sharp-looking, roomy and plush, and it had that unmistakable new-car smell. A Saint Larry didn't come across very often. He didn't know many people who had new cars, much less a ten-thousand-dollar Buick. That was easy enough for police to believe. Expensive new cars were generally not found in driveways over here on Buffalo's east side. Crumbling houses and overcrowded flats, yes. Poverty, unemployment and deprivation, sure. The east side had plenty of all that. It hadn't always been that way, of course. In fact, it had been anything but this way. Within living memory of many of its dwindling residents, Buffalo had been the picture of urban American prosperity, known for its robust industry, splendid architecture, and forward-thinking innovations. Buffalo had entered the twentieth century as the eighth-largest city in the United States, with a short but impressive legacy. Proximity to Canada, coupled with widespread anti-slavery sentiment among the populace, had allowed this city to play a notable role in the Underground Railroad, aiding the escape of fugitive slaves and defiance of federal law. An article in the New York Times on September eighth, eighteen fifty-five, criticized Buffalonians for their open and stubborn refusal to cooperate with the Fugitive Slave Act. Presidents Grover Cleveland and Millard Fillmore had both lived in Buffalo, as had authors Mark Twain and F. Scott Fitzgerald. The city's key waterways had made it a prime location for industrial development, generating employment for many and great wealth for some. Frederick Law Olmstead had developed the city's picturesque park system while major buildings and illustrious mansions had been designed by the foremost architects of the time, with no expense or luxury spared. Early in the century, Buffalo had the most widespread use of electrical lighting in the nation, courtesy of hydroelectric power from Niagara Falls, and at one point boasted more paved roads than New York City. The opening of the Saint Lawrence Seaway in nineteen fifty-nine rendered Buffalo's industrial waterways obsolete, landing the first major blow in what proved to be an intense downward economic spiral. Industries closed or downsized in rapid succession over the next two decades, disfiguring the queen city of the Great Lakes into a pitiful picture of the American Rust Belt. Perhaps even more remarkable than the change itself had been how fast things had gone to hell. John Reagan had grown up in the city's first ward, a solidly Irish working-class neighborhood south of downtown. Reagan was thirty-eight years old and had been a detective since nineteen seventy-one. He had entered the Buffalo Police Academy in nineteen sixty-two, mainly because he needed a job and had no interest in college or a trade. Now he thanked God he'd chosen a profession in which he didn't have to worry about his employer shutting down or moving out of state. Many of his boyhood friends had not been so lucky. As a result, there were fewer and fewer of them around. The nineteen seventies had been the worst. The city had lost almost a quarter of its population in that ten-year span, mostly middle-class people leaving for opportunities in other states or fleeing to suburbs to escape the decay and rising crime in the city, not to mention the oppressive dark mood. There were actually billboards that read, "Will the last person to leave Buffalo please turn off the lights?" In truth, the decline could be traced not to the evaporation of a single industry, but to a variety of shifting technologies and calamitous policy decisions, the combination of which had effectively stripped Western New York of both its economy and charm. Olmstead Parks had been carved through with expressways. Neighborhoods of single-family homes had been bulldozed to make way for high-rise public housing projects. Skyrocketing taxes, the highest in the nation, were the icing on the lousy cake. Buffalo thus began the nineteen eighties with a population of three hundred fifty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy, a good portion of whom were living below the poverty line, and a great many of whom were living with constant uncertainty and fear. The east side, where Detective John Reagan and his colleagues now found themselves working not a suicide but a crime scene, had perhaps been hit harder by the downturn than anywhere else. The changes here had been especially dramatic, both economically and demographically. The east side had one of the highest crime rates in the city, although this particular area, the easternmost point near the city line, was not among the most stricken. It was, however, undergoing a major racial transition. Up until a dozen years ago, the neighborhood had been largely populated by families with working-class Italian roots, surrounded by larger sections of residents with German and Polish ancestry. Though never a high-end part of town, it had been comfortable and safe, at least for residents who looked and lived like their neighbors, which was pretty much everybody. Things were changing, though. As the city's African-American population grew and as civil rights legislation had legally broken the boundaries of where they were permitted to live, Black families had gradually begun moving from their own section of the Lower East Side, the area where Blacks had traditionally lived since the eighteen hundreds, into adjoining communities. Throughout the nineteen seventies, more and more Black families had moved into homes vacated by Whites. There still were, of course, white residents to be found here, many of them from older generations who stubbornly resisted the efforts of their children or grandchildren to relocate them to suburbs like Amherst or Kenmore. They proudly declared that they had lived here for decades, refusing to move while at the same time lamenting the demise of the neighborhood, wistfully recalling how "it used to be so nice over here." The victim in this shooting fit the profile of both the typical resident and typical victim of crime on the east side. Glenn Dunn was Black, as was his traveling companion Larry Robinson. According to Larry, there had been nothing remarkable about the ride he and Glenn had taken that night in the Buick, not until Glenn revealed to him that the car was stolen. They'd been riding around for a while, just enjoying a leisurely cruise, when Glenn hit him with this news. He hadn't given Larry any details about the car theft, and Larry hadn't asked for any. He didn't want to know. It was after learning this that Larry asked Glenn to stop at the store, as he had intended to do all along. He was already in the hot car now. Might as well get the errand done and then have Glenn drop him off at home. They pulled up in front of the store, and Larry hopped out. Glenn promised to wait for him. No more than ten or fifteen minutes had passed before Larry exited the store. He didn't see Glenn or the Buick at first. But looking around, he spotted the car parked by the fence. Larry called Glenn's name as he walked toward the car. Glenn did not respond. Larry approached the driver's side where Glenn was sitting behind the wheel. He called to him again, louder this time, but Glenn only moaned. Glenn was sitting very still, staring straight ahead at the windshield. Larry reached in, nudged his shoulder. Glenn's head tipped to the right, and Larry saw what looked like blood. He also noticed a hole in the side of Glenn's head. Larry ran back to the store and alerted the police officer. That was all he knew. Stolen car. Bingo, thought John Reagan. There were a few auto-theft rings operating on the east side. Glenn Dunn must have been involved and gotten on somebody's bad side. But still, something didn't fit. Reagan had never known the car-theft rings to exact this kind of revenge, an execution-style hit. And if they were going to deal with an errant member that way, it didn't seem likely they'd kill him in one of the cars, if for no other reason than it ruined the inventory. Had Glenn Dunn been an informant, killed for working with the cops on the side? A quick call to the robbery division could answer that, and did. No one in robbery had ever heard of Glenn Dunn. It looked like the Buick Century was his first stolen car, and quite likely his last, considering the severity of the bullet wounds. As detectives were listening to Larry Robinson give his account of his last ride with Glenn Dunn, a woman named Madonna Gorney sat in her idling car. Her groceries were in the trunk. She was ready to drive home. But she hesitated, staring at the flashing lights through her rain-streaked front windshield. She wanted to talk to the police. The store manager had fluffed off her inquiries and told her not to bother the officers. Still, something made her feel that she should. She didn't know exactly what was going on, but thought maybe she should tell them about the black man she saw standing under the lamppost when she had pulled into Tops. She didn't see him now. And that car that the police were gathered around, it hadn't been there when she pulled in. Madonna also recalled the odd man who had been sitting outside the store entrance when she went in, the young white guy wearing glasses and a blue jacket with a paper bag by his feet, and such a dazed look on his face. He had not looked well to her, not at all. The ambulance carrying Glenn Dunn had already departed for the hospital, and John Reagan was preparing to follow when Lieutenant Mistle brought a young man over to speak with him. He was a slender white kid with a mop of dark brown hair. He said his name was Kenny Paulson. He was seventeen years old and lived a few houses down on Floss. He said he had been in the parking lot, coming out of the store, you know, when he saw a man walk up to that car, the one the police now had cordoned off, and shoot the driver. Kenny Paulson described it for him. The guy who got shot, the black guy, was standing next to his car smoking a cigarette when Kenny first saw him. He tossed the cigarette and got in the driver's seat. About a minute later, another guy, a white guy, walked up and shot him through the open window, then ran away. He hadn't heard any arguing. He hadn't heard either of them say anything, in fact. The white guy just walked up, shot the guy in the car, and left. Kenny had been close enough to see the fireballs bursting from the barrel of the gun. After the shooter took off, there was no one else around, except for the guy in the car, of course, who didn't move or make any sound that he could hear. Scared, Kenny immediately ran home. Shortly after, though, he thought he'd better come back and tell the police what he had seen. Detective Reagan thanked him for coming back. He could understand why the kid's first instinct was to run home. It must have been a pretty shocking sight, especially for a teenager. Reagan had him tell the story again. Kenny Paulson had no idea what kind of a gun it was, but he described the shots as four quick, loud blasts. Once again, he described the yellow flash of the fire from the barrel, the way the shooter had walked up to the car, and the direction that he ran. When it came to describing the shooter himself, though, beyond saying he was a white guy, Kenny could not be at all specific. He was quite vague, in fact, not even willing to commit to whether the man was short or tall, thin or heavy-set. He couldn't remember what the guy was wearing. He wasn't sure what color his hair may have been. He just didn't have any descriptive details for them at all. He even seemed sketchy on whether the shooter was indeed white. At the time, Reagan had no reason to believe Kenny was lying. Chapter Two. Tuesday, September twenty-third, nineteen eighty. Linda Snyder decided to go to Burger King for lunch. It was a beautiful afternoon, bright and sunny after last night's rain, and stepping out from her office at the New York State Throughway Authority to grab a bite and enjoy the nice weather for a bit sounded like a good idea. As she was forced to recall this particular lunch break over and over again in the years to come, she would always think, "It was so nice out that day," as if she could never reconcile the contrast between the pleasant setting and the ghastly scene that played out. At noon, Linda and her coworker Jean Riesius left the Throughway Authority building at eighteen seventy Walden Avenue in Chictawaga, a suburb of Buffalo. From there, they made the two-minute drive to Burger King at twenty-nine forty Union Road. Burger King sat next to a restaurant called Polish Villa. Directly across the street was a shopping center called the Como Mall. The combination of nice weather and a selection of places to eat meant the area was fairly busy during the lunch hour. Traveling in a Throughway Authority car, Linda and Jean pulled into the lot at Burger King and parked next to a small, two-tone brown car. Sitting in the driver's seat of the brown car was a person Linda later described as a neat, good-looking black man with a short Afro haircut, wearing big tinted-rimmed glasses. As front-page news stories would later proclaim, the man was sitting quietly in his car, alone, eating his lunch. Linda and Jean spent about twenty minutes inside Burger King before returning to the parking lot. Crossing the lot toward their car, they stopped momentarily as a car drove past them. It was right after the car passed that they heard two quick bangs. Linda turned to Jean and asked, "Were they gunshots?" "No," Jean thought. "It sounded like firecrackers." As they took one or two more steps toward their vehicle, Linda looked up and saw a man darting away from the brown car parked next to theirs. The man ran very fast up into a grassy area that divided the parking lots of Burger King and the Polish Villa. He continued running past the front of the Polish Villa, so close to the building that if someone had opened the door, he would have run into it, Linda thought, and disappeared around the corner. Linda noticed that he wore a hat and had a brown paper bag tucked under one arm. Dominic Punta Yarrow had also come to Burger King for lunch that day. He got a takeout order and sat in his car to eat. He was parked a couple spaces away from the small brown car. Dominic was almost finished eating his lunch when he noticed a person walking on the grassy area between Burger King and the Polish Villa. He glanced up for a second or two at the person, a man wearing a fishing-type hat, carrying a paper bag. When the man in the fishing hat had looked back at him, Dominic turned away. The man walked from the grassy area into the parking lot, past the rear of Dominic's car. About thirty seconds later, Dominic heard two noises that sounded to him like a car running over a manhole cover. Looking up and to his left, Dominic saw the man in the fishing hat running away from the brown car, darting back up into the grassy area and out of sight. About a minute later, having now finished his lunch, Dominic drove out of his parking space. Making his way toward the exit, he looked over at the brown car and saw a black man slumped over in the driver's seat, the man's head almost hanging out the window. Dominic slowly pulled out of the parking lot onto Union Road, then stopped on the shoulder. He stayed there a couple of seconds, looking in- He stayed there a couple of seconds, looking in his rearview mirror at the man slumped in the brown car. Linda Snyder and Jean Riesius took the few last steps toward their vehicle. Linda was about to climb into the passenger's side, but stopped short when she saw that the man in the car parked next to them was leaning sharply to his left, with his head on the sill of the open driver's side window. Linda saw him twitch. Smoke was rising from his head. Linda recoiled, taking a few stumbling steps backward, away from the twitching, smoking body. Dominic Punta Yero drove back into the Burger King parking lot, stopped his car, and got out. He looked at the brown car and saw that the man inside was still in the same slumped posture. Dominic saw a man and a woman standing in the parking lot. He couldn't hear what they were saying, but he got the impression that they knew something was wrong. The man started pulling the woman away, urging, let's go, let's go. Linda hurried around to the driver's side of the Throughway Authority car and got in, scrambling over Jean to the passenger's seat. She tried to avoid looking at the black man in the car next to them, but she couldn't help it. There he was, and she could not look away much as she wanted to. Jean told her to calm down as he started the car and backed out. They left the Burger King parking lot and drove back to work. Dominic decided he didn't want to be here either. He got back into his own car and pulled away. As he passed the brown car, he noted again that the man inside had not moved. Dominic tapped his horn. The man didn't move. Dominic drove onto Union Road, but instead of heading back to work, he parked across the street at the Como Mall. He thought about calling the police. He drove once again to Burger King, went inside, and told the employees that there was a man in the parking lot who might need help. A female employee at Burger King told him that they would check it out. Dominic left and went back to work. Russell Shabaresi had just pulled into his driveway on Vern Lane in Chictawaga. As he would later tell police, it was sometime between twelve-thirty and one P M when he stepped out of his car and noticed a strange man across the street. The man was walking quickly and appeared to be very nervous, looking all around him. He seemed out of breath, and his walk was a little wobbly, as if he had just been running. The man carried a brown paper bag rolled up under his right arm. He dropped the bag and swooped down to snatch it up. Grasping the bag, the man looked around again and spotted Russell. The man started running. He ran across the lawn into the corner of Vern Lane in Fair Oaks, where he opened the passenger door of a red station wagon and tossed the paper bag inside, then got in on the driver's side and pulled away, tires screeching. He looked back at Russell a final time before speeding off. Both the man's behavior and his appearance struck Russell as odd. He wore a fishing hat and a faded jacket. His pants seemed a bit too short. The clothing had been the thing that first caught Russell's attention because his whole outfit seemed out of place. He looked like he was dressed to go hunting. Linda and Jean had arrived back at the Throughway Authority Building shortly before twelve-thirty. Linda had rushed into the ladies' lunchroom to tell her coworkers about the horrifying sight at Burger King. Dominic returned to his job shortly after twelve-thirty, and he was also talking to his coworkers about the disturbing scene. One of the employees who worked with Dominic was a volunteer fireman with a portable radio that picked up emergency calls. Dominic asked if he had heard anything about Burger King. The man said yes, there had been a call concerning Burger King on Union Road. Dominic called the police. It was twelve forty-five P M. At about the same time and a few miles west, Al Williams of the Buffalo Homicide Squad was observing the autopsy of Glenn Dunn. Williams had been a police officer for twelve years, the only black cadet in his graduating class of February nineteen sixty-eight. Currently, he was an acting detective assigned to homicide, one of the only black detectives on the force. In the stark tomb of the Erie County Medical Examiner's Office, Williams recorded the extensive damage that had been done to the boy. Glenn had four wounds caused by three bullets. One bullet had struck him in the lower-left eyelid, another in the left cheek. These two wounds were surrounded by powder burns five inches in diameter. A third bullet had splintered on impact, causing a wound on his left ear and entering the left temple. Williams noted that the stomach contents revealed bloody fluid and no evidence of food. Two deformed bullets and fragments of a third were removed from his head. The bullets and fragments were put in glass jars and labeled. Detective Williams took the evidence and death certificate back to the homicide squad office along with a vial of Glenn's blood. The murder of a child was always a disturbing case to work, even for seasoned officers who prided themselves on their professional equilibrium. Al Williams left the morgue, determined, as always, to see the case through to whatever justice could be attained for the young victim, blissfully unaware of the impending firestorm and sleepless nights to come. Detective Robert Grabowski and Officer Matthew Parsons were at the east-side home of Madonna Gorney, taking a report on what she had seen the night before outside Tops. Madonna had discovered while watching the eleven P M news that the incident in the parking lot had been a shooting and that the teenaged victim had been pronounced dead on arrival at Erie County Medical Center. She had contacted the Buffalo Police that morning. Madonna was twenty-eight years old, married, the mother of two small children. She worked as a psychiatric nursing assistant. She had been on her way home from a night class at Bennett High School the night before and stopped at Tops sometime between nine thirty-five to nine forty P M. As she pulled into the parking lot, she noticed a lone black male standing under a lamppost by the Floss Avenue fence. She paid attention to this man, Madonna explained, because she was cautious. There was no one else around, and she had almost eighty dollars in her purse. She got out of her car, but instead of heading toward the entrance, she walked in the opposite direction toward Genesee Street in order to put some distance between herself and the man before circling around and entering the store. She hadn't spent much time in Tops, probably less than ten minutes, before walking out the same door through which she had come. On the way to her car, she passed by three men, the store manager, the security guard, and a young black man, walking hastily in the opposite direction, back toward Tops. She overheard the young black man ask the officer, was he shot, or what? Madonna got into her car, backed out of her parking space, and drove slowly toward the exit. The black man who had been standing under the lamppost was no longer there. Instead, a car was parked in that spot. Police cars with lights flashing were entering the lot. Madonna pulled over and stopped her car. She sat there for a minute or two. An ambulance drove up. Madonna got out of her car and walked back to the store. She thought she should talk to the police and tell them what she saw, which wasn't much, but still. She approached the store manager instead, who didn't have much to say to her other than that things were under control. Madonna felt uneasy about leaving before speaking with the officers, but she returned to her car. A police car drove out of the parking lot, and she followed it up Floss Avenue. When it reached the corner of Floss and Lang Streets, she honked her horn to get the officer's attention. The police car kept going, turning on Lang Street, and Madonna drove behind. She honked her horn again, and once more, another block down. But the police car did not stop. She gave up and drove the short distance to her home. Detective Grabowski and Officer Parsons took a description of the man Madonna saw leaning against the lamppost. Black male, twenty to thirty years old, six feet tall, close-cut hair. He wore a dark, bulky nylon-type jacket with a light-colored shirt underneath and dark pants. He had both hands in his jacket pockets. After the officers left her home, Madonna realized she had forgotten to tell them about the young white man outside the store, sitting on the railroad ties with that dopey stare and the brown paper bag at his feet. She thought maybe she should have mentioned him, since he may have seen more than she did. At police headquarters, John Reagan and Melvin Lobbitt were interviewing Kenny Paulson, the teenage witness to the Dunn shooting. He and his father had come downtown so Kenny could make a formal statement. Police were meanwhile canvassing the neighborhood where the murder occurred, in search of other possible witnesses. It wasn't long into the interview with Kenny Paulson that Reagan and Lobbitt started praying they'd find some. The Paulson kid was not exactly your dream witness. Even though he had actually seen the shooting take place, he seems near worthless when it came to any sort of useful description of the gunman. All he had offered so far was that the killer was a male, five feet nine, of medium build, wearing a blue hooded sweatshirt. Last night, he said the shooter was white. Now, he said he didn't know the man's skin color. It wasn't unheard of for a witness to a shooting to have little recollection of the perpetrator. Witnesses are often transfixed by the gun itself, rather than the person firing it. Still, something about Paulson's vague description didn't sit quite right. Lieutenant Bill Mistle, the first officer on the scene, had felt the same way. Reagan didn't know it at the time, but Mistle had noted in his report that Kenny Paulson seemed reluctant to identify the assailant as white. Reagan and Lobbitt had just concluded the interview when they received news about the shooting at Burger King in Chictawaga. There were strong similarities to the Dunn murder in Buffalo just hours before. The crime scenes were only five miles apart. The victim in the Chictawaga attack was identified as Harold Green, age thirty-two, who lived at two-eleven LaSalle Street in Buffalo. He had been rushed to Saint Joseph Inter-Community Hospital, arriving at twelve fifty-five P M in a comatose condition. He had been shot twice in the left temporal region of his head. Harold Green's mother and stepbrother arrived at the hospital and spoke with Detective Dombrowski of the Chictawaga P D. Harold's mother, Regina Green, said that her son was a very quiet individual whose whole life centered around his work and his education. Harold worked as an assistant engineer at Moog Industries and attended night classes at the State University of New York at Buffalo, pursuing his master's degree in engineering. He had served in the Air Force, returning home to Buffalo with an honorable discharge. He lived alone in the lower flat of the home he owned in Buffalo and rented the upper flat. Neither Mrs. Green nor Harold's stepbrother could name any of Harold's friends. He dated women occasionally, but otherwise, his life was consumed by his work and his studies. Harold even used his limited spare time productively, spending every Saturday working around his home or his mother's. As doctors performed an emergency craniotomy on Harold Green to remove necrotic brain tissue and bullet fragments, Chictawaga Police processed the crime scene. In addition to the bloodstains in Green's nineteen eighty Honda, they found a bullet fragment on the rear deck of the passenger's side and a twenty-two caliber shell casing on the driver's side. As night fell on Tuesday, police in Buffalo and Chictawaga were comparing the similarities in their two cases, the style of the attacks, the locations, the twenty-two shell casings. The only major difference was the victims, who seemed to have no connection to each other and were entirely different in age, background, and lifestyle. The only things Glenn Dunn and Harold Green seemed to have in common were their race and gender. At eleven thirty P M, two black men were walking on Buffalo's east side. Emmanuel Thomas, age thirty-one, and Frenchon, Frenchy Cook, age twenty-six, were friends. They had spent an ordinary Tuesday evening playing cards with Emmanuel's wife Dorothy and some friends at the home of a neighbor. Emmanuel, Dorothy, and Frenchy had arrived back of the Thomases' home at seventy Zenner Street around ten thirty P M. As the eleven o'clock news was ending, Emmanuel told his wife that he was going to walk to his mother's home, just a few houses down on Zenner. He said he'd be right back, so she should leave the door open. Frenchy left with him. Reaching the nearby corner of Zenner and East Ferry Streets, Emmanuel and Frenchy spotted a friend, Butch Palmer. The three men stood at the corner, talking for a moment, before Butch turned and went to his home, two houses down on East Ferry. Emmanuel and Frenchy followed. Emmanuel stepped up to the door of Butch's home and spoke with someone inside. As Frenchy stood waiting at the bottom of the front porch steps, a white man walked up and asked him a question. As Frenchy Cook would later tell police, the white man asked if he knew where Diane or Dorothy lived. It was one of the two, either Diane or Dorothy, but Frenchy could not remember which, and Frenchy replied that he didn't know. The white man walked away. Emmanuel returned to the sidewalk and said to Frenchy, let's go, man. The two of them had only walked as far as the corner of Zenner and East Ferry when they heard a male voice behind them say, hey. They turned around. It was the same white man who had spoken to Frenchy just a minute earlier. The white man pointed a gun and fired. Emmanuel cried out. Frenchy ran. The white man fired again and again. The sound of gunshots brought several neighbors to their windows. Some of them saw a white man get into a blue car and drive away down East Ferry. Emmanuel Thomas lay motionless on Zenner Street. A crowd gathered. A neighbor ran to the Thomas home and told Dorothy to come down to the corner quick. Emmanuel was hurt. How could he be hurt, Dorothy asked? He just walked out. The friend replied that Emmanuel had been shot, and that if Dorothy didn't believe him, she should step out onto her porch and look at all the people gathered at the corner. Dorothy did so. Seeing the crowd, she ran down to the corner of Zenner and East Ferry to see for herself. It was eleven thirty-five P M. Her husband had only been gone for five minutes. The first patrol car arrived within two minutes, quickly followed by more. Calls were made for an ambulance and detectives. Responding officers knew instantly that the victim was dead. Some of the same officers had responded to the shooting of Glenn Dunn the night before, which had happened less than a mile away. Before the ambulance took Emmanuel Thomas to Erie County Medical Center, officers noted a gunshot wound on the left side of his head. They also found twenty-two caliber shell casings.
Context of white supremacy. So we will pick up, we will be right at the beginning of chapter three, Wednesday, September twenty-four, nineteen eighty. That's where we'll pick up at for the beginning of audio segment number two. First thing I have to say, man, oh, man, um, I did not read this book, right? I never read this book, hadn't even heard of this book until Sunday. Buffalo massacre happens on Saturday? Sunday? I remember, wasn't there a big white supremacist slaughter of black people in Buffalo before in the eighties? And I go, confirm, Starlet, hey, is there a book? I find absolute madness on Sunday. I didn't read one page as soon as I saw that there was a book that was comprehensive nonfiction about this incident. Let's read, I didn't flip a page. I was as stunned as you should be to hear Tops Grocery Store? You mean the exact same grocery store? And I have to confirm like the location, but I mean, hey, they said all week, what you heard in the audio we started with Tops Food Desert in this part of East Buffalo. So I mean, it can't be a whole lot of Tops grocery stores there. You mean that the very first black person to be killed in the nineteen eighties incident happened at the very same Tops Grocery Store? I was going to say, I posted lots of news articles and will have many, many more to share as we proceed through this book, but I was going to try to come up with something informative, impactful to say about why history is important. I was even gonna make sure I included, I posted so many reports, and we had someone on Facebook, they said, uh, man, Gus T., how do you find all of these articles? And I told him, you know, you can just go to the library. I take advantage, university, college libraries are amazing because they have all kinds of resources archived. University, college libraries are amazing because they'll have all kinds of resources archived for years, sometimes centuries. And you can just go search by name, person, you know, event, whatever it is. And then once you find one or two, you'll see some of the keywords and away you go. But I just went to University of Washington, put in a search, Joseph G. Christopher, and tons. Literal dozens at least. I shared many, Twitter, Facebook, you can go check it out. And I, in responding and telling him, you know, hey, it's not too difficult. I did remind him, oh, yeah, I do have a history degree. That is one reason Gusty knew about this case, but, man, like, nothing is more important in terms of, hey, why is history important? Dr. Welzing called it connecting the dots. That is a disgrace and a flagrant act of white supremacy racism that the New York Times, CNN, NPR, every Al Jazeera, BBC, every major news outlet. New York Times has tons on Mr. Christopher, so I mean, hey, make the connection immediately. This is the part of town you go to if you want to kill black people, go to Tops in East Buffalo. And it wasn't just one time, over and over in the six... I was absolutely stunned. The other thing, I had to pause, I said, "Man, yeah, Gusty, how do you know about this incident?" Because I was not, you know, functioning or what have you in nineteen eighty-one. Wasn't aware of it, I don't have any connections to Buffalo, I've never been to Buffalo, so how did you know about this? It took me almost a full week to think, ah, this is briefly mentioned in Chet Detlinger's The List. He was our first guest on the program when the cows came back on the air in two thousand nine, the so-called Atlanta Child Murders. Oh, my God. I sat in the University of Washington Library for hours yesterday. Part of the reason I was there so long is I went on the microfilm to get some of the nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty articles about this case. And I kept being interrupted because there are so many articles at the very same time about the so-called Atlanta Child Murders and all of these black children disappearing in Atlanta. And this is way before they even arrested Wayne Williams. So, this is just, oh, my gosh, every other day, a week or what have you, black child goes missing, black child goes missing, black child. This has been going on for years at this point when they're talking about it in nineteen eighty-one. So, it was another staggering moment to realize, like Dr. Welzing again saying, to connect the dots. These two cases are happening at the same time. Atlanta Child Murders and disappearances in Atlanta. And then, what is that, about six hundred miles, seven hundred miles north in Buffalo, New York? Black males and dark-skinned, non-white males being killed and attacked. Wow. So much could be said about that. I can only say, hey, history is also important because with all of the folks who were alive in the nineteen eighties, still alive right now, who could connect the dots, hey, if you don't understand white supremacy racism, sometimes memory can be really poor. And racists, they capitalize on that and cause a great deal of confusion. I think I could be an error, but I think it would stand out way more if it was, this has happened again at Tops in Buffalo, New York. That is way, and you have all the New York Times archival footage and the trial and everything. This has happened again. That makes me think about this in a real different mess, especially if somebody wants to talk to me about progress. Reading more important than watching television. The number is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. And have to say for this one, Orenthal James Simpson. I think at one time it would have been impossible to mention the city Buffalo, New York, and not mention Orenthal James Simpson. In fact, I think Orenthal James Simpson would have been playing for the Buffalo Bills when this event was... I have to go back to verify, but whoo, that might be who they were watching on Monday Night Football. Orenthal James Simpson. Oh, he's gonna have to be mentioned. Like, there is no way we're gonna get through this whole book without a juice reference. Maybe three, four, twelve of them, who knows? We'll see, I'll take that wager right now. Number again is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. The email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Drop me a line. If you would like a book to read along, let me know. Again, you can follow me on Facebook, facebook.com/the problem is white people and on Twitter, at untiljustice, at untiljustice. I have been posting lots of reports on this whole situation for about, since Sunday, really. But news articles, archival information, you can go, and I will continue to post even more as we continue reading. So, if you would be interested in reading, doing more research about this event that started at the very same Tops, it seems, facebook.com/the problem is white people, on Twitter, at untiljustice. I even shared this information with Dr. Curry and Dr. T. Hassan Johnson, like, man, did you all know about this case in Buffalo? Shouldn't this be talked about in connection with what happened right now? Anybody out there now, if you were alive and functional, like you weren't, you know, an infant being breastfed when this happened, if you were alive and functional, do you remember this? Still asking? And/or, if you were not alive, ask your parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, whomever. If you have older friends, ask them, "Do you remember this? Cutting out hearts, killing all these black people, black males specifically? Do you, do you remember all this? Happened the same time as the child..." Do you remember all that? And just see what they say, let us know. Let us see, getting to the phone lines, all the folks who dialed in with a hand... And definitely make sure you call Gusty out as a liar. Now, if you've seen this all over the Chicago Tribune, New York Times, Buffalo News, CBC, BBC, Al Jazeera, The Young Turks, or any other outlets where they've been every day or at least once or twice casually referenced, oh, yeah, this happened before. At the very same grocery store, it seems, or at least the same branch, but I think it's the exact same store. Like, if you've heard that, then my bad, but I have read a lot, I've checked a lot of outlets, and I have not seen his name mentioned one time. That is deliberate. I don't want to hear ignorance. They could have did the same thing that I did with no staff, no budget, go to the flipping library. That right there is deliberate. That's how you keep victims confused. No historical context, connect the dots, as Dr. Welzing said. Folks who dialed in with a hand up, line should be open. Did you know about this case? And/or, ask your parents, grandparents, and such? Did they know about this case?
Greetings.
Retired firefighter in Florida?
Yes, greetings to everyone. I was in graduate school in nineteen eighty. It depends on what time, part of a year that incident took place, on whether or not I was back home on break or in Grambling, Louisiana, one or the two. But I did not know about it at the time. Matter of fact, the first time hearing about it was through you. I don't want to forget that ninety-six years ago, May nineteenth, nineteen twenty-five, Minister Malcolm X came into the world. But anyway, yeah, I was not aware of the, uh, these killings that we're reading about now. Yeah, but I, I, I'm kind of not surprised that, uh, the grocery store, uh, you know, was, was mentioned in the, in, you know, into the incident because in a lot of places, as I, I think most everybody knows, they really don't change that much in areas where we're at. They don't have, even if there is a chain of grocery stores as such as down here, the one that sits in the area where black people are at doesn't have the same quality of foods as it may have in a, in one of the chains that's, that lies in the area where the majority of people are white. And I think that is synonymous just about everywhere. Orenthal James Simpson's professional football career by nineteen eighty was over. He ended his career with the Buffalo Bills in nineteen, after the nineteen seventy-seven season. He finishes his career with San Francisco Forty-Niners, which is actually his home, quote-unquote, hometown. You know, for about, I think he played there for about maybe a year, something like that. So, the juice was already gone from Buffalo by that time that incident was going on. But, yeah, so we're not gonna have a second half reading. Is that correct?
Never said that, we will have a second half reading.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, because you, you, you weren't going through the normal thing that you normally state about it. But with the, uh, the first half, it kind of like was reminding me of some of the crazy calls that I had been on myself when I was on that job as a firefighter. A lot of people think that firemen just go on fire calls. And in all actuality, most of the calls that fire departments go on are not fires. They are rescue cases, or some sort of medical issue, trauma issue of some type overwhelmingly. Because although buildings are not as safe in areas where non-white people have to stay in or where they're allowed to stay, the building, building constructions and the safety of it has improved over the years to whereas, uh, medical and trauma issues have far escalated over for fire departments, fires. And so, you know, most of those calls, you're gonna see the fire department at some level because they also, firefighters are also paramedics for the most part. And any call that is serious that causes some sort of injury to, uh, whether it's a uniformed personnel or a citizen, the fire department will be there also, that's for sure. But, yeah, that's what the first half reminded me of as far as some of the details of the gunshot wounds. As anybody probably knows, a gunshot wound to the head, and in this case, multiple gunshot wounds to someone's head, it's not gonna turn out too good for that person as far as the end results in most cases. And that's what I have to say in the first, first half, thank you.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. Other folks who we have not heard from at all, if you have commentary to share, proceed.
Can I be heard?
Heard you both, let's see, we'll get Henry in Chicago.
All right, greetings, Dustin, and greetings to all the callers and listeners. I actually looked up that address to the Tops Grocery that was referenced in the novel. And I Googled the Tops Grocery that is, that was, uh, the location of the Buffalo shooting, and it's not the same address, according to what Google told me. So, it's like, uh, one, uh, the Buffalo Shooters, Tops Grocery was on Jefferson, and the novel referenced the one on Genesee Street, which I did a Google, you know, I did a Google Map, and that Tops is not there anymore, according to, you know, Google Maps. Apparently, there's a church there, which is ironic. But that Tops, which looks like it's a chain, it is basically a chain store that specifically located in Buffalo. I don't know what other markets they're in, but they, there were several of them in Buffalo. I think I counted one, two, three, four, five, or at least six Tops Groceries right now in Buffalo. But the one that is from the nineteen eighty murder and the one from last weekend, they're only three point four miles apart. That's really, you know, that's really interesting. The, uh, the historical content about Buffalo was pretty interesting. I also looked up, you know, the racial demographics of it. And I, I found it interesting, the author, well, you know, we probably know why she, you know, kept it out, but, you know, she was talking about the decline of population. Well, I also looked at the, the racial demographics as well. And I noticed, uh, looking at the census statistics that Buffalo's white population was on the decline. So, nineteen seventy, there was seventy-eight percent white people. Nineteen ninety, sixty-four percent. Twenty-ten, fifty percent. And twenty-twenty, which is two years ago, forty-one percent white people. So, this is something that, you know, she intentionally left out with, I guess, white flight, I guess, and what people call it, who knows? Also, too, some of the historical characters that she referenced was pretty interesting. Mark Twain, first thing I thought of is Nigger Jim from, uh, Huckleberry Finn. And Scott Gerald, who wrote The Great Gatsby, which referenced The Rising Tide of Color by Lafferty Stoddard. The, uh, the great white supremacist liter, uh, literature that actually you read, what, about five years ago or something? I still think that was an important novel, I mean, not a novel, but a book, inside the mind of a white supremacist type of book. Also saw that that Burger King on twenty-nine forty Union Road, that's not there anymore either, according to the Google search that I did. There's something called Kinton Dance Center that's over there now. Now, the Polish villa is still there, according to the map. Yeah, I thought that was pretty interesting, uh, where the, 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 the girl Madonna noticed the black male standing under the lamppost, but she didn't think the white man, who was looking stranger eyes, you know, that, that didn't mean nothing to her. Which, you know, typical, you know, typical racist view of, 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 you know, black people. So, that really didn't shock me at all with that. So, and then, and then the last thing, Harold Green, the last victim that, that this reading had mentioned about him, thirty-four years old, going to school. about him, uh, thirty-four years old, uh, going to school, being productive, uh, didn't say anything about him partying, frolicking, smoking or drinking or anything like that, just going to school, next thing you know, some white supremacist man comes and shoots him in the head. Um, but, you know, all black men are savages, at least that's what they say. But that's my thought. I'll meet my line.
Much obliged, Henry in Chicago, got clarification about the location of the Tops, uh, much appreciated for that. Uh, let's see, thank you for your patience. Uh, I think that's our caller in California, uh, if you want to share your thoughts, you should be with us also.
Greetings, Gus, greetings to the callers and listeners. Um, uh, one thing caught my ear was the, um, author saying that he was dressed like he was hunting and that is, um, very, um, telling to what is actually happening on planet Earth, twenty-twenty-two. Racist man and racist woman and racist child are hunting non-white people, especially people classified as black and, um, most of us are not aware that this is happening, which is why we are, um, I suspect able to be so easily, um, slaughtered, um, all the time. And, um, there's a, um, really, I think this is a metaphor, but history repeats itself. I think that's a, um, lame metaphor because I don't think history repeated himself. I think white people are doing what they've been doing for a very, very long time, which is hunting, harming and practicing and maintaining this race war, this insane act of terrorism against, um, non-white people. And, um, yeah, this Texas, um, I did not, did not know about this, if, these incidents occurring, um, nor was I born then, but I'd have never heard of mentioning any serial killer in Buffalo ever. And I know, um, a number of black people from Buffalo, I'm certain they do not know about this, um, these incidents. But we've been, um, be hunted for a very long time and it, this is a, um, I was listening to this and hearing just how he just, you know, eliminating non-white people at, um, at random, like, it, it just makes me, um, reminds me to ask the, um, creator to, um, allow non-white people to, um, begin to understand what's happening and to begin practicing some sort of counter violence or something. And I'll pause there.
Much obliged, our caller in California. Uh, let's see, thus far, folks saying that they don't know, and I've heard that as well, people in the New York area, because this is going to eventually expand beyond Buffalo specifically, uh, but folks in the New York area and such saying, yep, I do not remember and or I've not heard of, like if they, like you were not alive, uh, I've not heard of this. Uh, and again, even over the last five days, this should have been included in all of the conversation, all of the news reports. That would have been, in my opinion, comprehensive, responsible journalism. That's not what we have. No connecting the dots. Other folks who dialed in that we missed totally, if you have a hand up, uh, line should be open. And again, did you know about this and or, uh, parents, uh, grandparents, aunts, uncles, did they know about this? Let us know. Other folks that we missed totally, with a hand up.
May I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Uh, greetings, Gus, callers and listeners. Um, I'm in the New York area and I've never heard of this, um, event and part of the noise. Uh, and also, you know, I was here during that time. I, I, I wasn't born in the States. I was, I was born out of the States, but I was here during that time and I've never heard family members or anybody reference this or talk about this. Neither, neither have I heard any publications because I've been looking at the news and trying to see what's going on with the news. Any of them really mentioned it at all, you know? I don't even, I don't even think I saw anything on NPR in regards to this. So, I mean, there, there's something definitely to keeping these type of situations under wraps as they happen, um, randomly, uh, well, not randomly, accordingly, I think. Um, but also, um, being here, I'm, I'm based in the city, we have seen a spike, uh, in the last two days since this shooting. Police officers are everywhere and I mean, um, getting off the train, two, three officers per train car, like standing in front of the train, waiting for you to get off, two officers. Then when you go upstairs to go to the surface, there's a police officer standing there when you, soon as you walk up the stairs. And then when you get upstairs, major buildings that have any kind of, um, lobby, police officers are there as well. Um, when I came home, um, five police officers have been train, at the train station, like, and they are, there's something else going on where I believe that they may have gotten some kind of notification or some kind of tip that there might be something that may occur in the city. Because I don't see any other logical reason why there's such a spike in police officers patrolling. Um, but I will say this, there was also a shooting on the train station last week. But, um, I think accompanied, normally if there's violence on the train, police, um, the, the, the watch isn't that heavily increased, you know, especially in predominantly white areas or non-white areas, but policemen are not out the way they are out now. Um, it's just something I wanted to offer as far as what I've been seeing and I'll, I'll keep monitoring that throughout the week and see what goes on. I'll meet my line. Thank you.
Much obliged for, uh, sharing. I haven't seen it in any of the media outlets in terms of a reference of the, the nickname, the twenty-two caliber killer, Joseph G. Christopher. I haven't seen it in any media outlets either. Um, and I think they have said that they had a number of threats and things where different race soldiers have referenced, applauded, threatened to copy what happened in Buffalo this past weekend. They've had different arrests and things, uh, over the past five days of the like. So that may be in addition to all of the reports of gun violence and everything in New York and subway violence in New York anyway. So this may just, you know, have added to the increased police presence, but, uh, something to be aware of. Other folks that we missed totally, if you have a hand up? Missed anybody? Anybody missed totally?
May I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Yes, greetings, Gus, this is, uh, this is Montevideo. Um, to answer the quest, the initial question, I was twelve years old at the time of the, this, um, incident. I, I recall reports of the Atlanta murders, however, fine, I, I don't recall any reports from this, um, particular incident. And then I also found it interesting, very fascinating, the choice of, um, race soldier Gendron to, uh, carry out this attack at the Tops supermarket, but, you know, who's to say that he, you know, as we say, they are not, um, ignorant to white supremacy? So he might have found it important or might even read this particular book and decided to add it into his, um, his, his attack plan. I'll meet my line. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. He, uh, he did all the research and recon that they've talked about. He totally could have read this book and or just read about all, like I said, there's tons of information, you know, if he had a library card or what have you, and he's in New York, so it would have been easily available and he's around other white people, they may have been talking to him about all of this, you know? So easy. Uh, I'll read some of the written commentary and then I'll share some of my thoughts and then we will get to our second audio segment. Uh, this is one of our investors, he wrote in, uh, greetings, Gus. Having lived in New York City during the time period of these murders, I have no recollection of them. I was an avid reader of newspapers and viewer of local news, so I probably read about it at the time. I certainly read and viewed numerous reports regarding son of Sam, David Berkowitz and Bernard Goetz. Oh, my gosh, they had reports. I, I said I spent hours at the library, so tom- sometimes it is, how disciplined are you willing to be? If you find fifty articles, are you disciplined enough to copy all fifty? And yesterday, I was disciplined enough to copy, I mean, everything that I could find that was worth anything about Christopher or Joseph G. Christopher, I took and all of the extras on the Atlanta child murders, I took. The only thing I didn't get, Bernard, is just how many raping black males am I going to get? So Goat, he does the, uh, shooting on the, people don't know about this, is a white guy, he thinks, oh, he's got a screwdriver, what are they doing? Pow, 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 he goes and shoots him and stands over him, pow, 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 all the rest of it, that's my quicken, you know, searching online. Uh, but one of the guys that he shot, oh, I'm just talking about subway violence, it's just the same thing over and over and over. So one of the guys that he shot, they had in the paper that he was arrested for, er, raping blackmail. See, if he hadn't been shot, he would probably raped somebody that night. I didn't get that article, again, how many raping blackmail reports do you need? Continuing, uh, the subway vigil, the subway vigilante, they got whole documentaries about him. Uh, this looks like it's going to be another time they're reading the book club. Chapter one, the Tops Market Employed Off-Duty Police Officers. This reads almost prophetic given the events of the past week. And again, how is this not mentioned? You could be lazy, you don't even have to read the whole book. You can read the first, like, two pages, be like, oh, look at this! You can come in and brag, stick your chest out, like, look what I found, I read all weekend, what I read all weekend. This is amazing. We could just tie this in with a port, get a Pulitzer. Nobody? That is not ignorance, that is deliberate white supremacy racism. No connecting the dots. He continues, chapter one, or chap, number two from chapter one. The antislavery sentiment Underground Railroad from eighteen-ten to eighteen-fifty, it is estimated that ten, or excuse me, a hundred thousand slaves escaped via the so-called Underground Railroad. There were approximately three point two million slaves in the U.S. during the year eighteen-fifty. Given the minuscule number of slaves who were able to escape using the Underground Railroad, invoking it as an example of white benevolence seems like an act of racism, white supremacy. Hmm, I agree, and that is spelled out very explicitly in the half has never been told, Edward Baptist, we read in the book club, he said that exactly, that it was like less than two percent, I think it's even smaller than that in terms of the number, the number of black people who escaped so-called, and slavery was in Canada too, so I mean, what does that even mean? Uh, let's see, number three, Kenny Paulson. He even seemed sketchy on whether the shooter was indeed white. At the time, Reagan had no reason to believe Kenny was lying. Is Kenny uncertain or exhibiting traits of the white code? Incidentally, Orenthal James, man, he reminded me of Cato. Did he, did anybody else? Y'all can let me know later maybe, but I thought Cato, there he is again, OJ Simpson, we got another, anyway. Chapter two, uh, Linda Snyder, Jean Rhesus tried to avoid looking at the black man. They drove back to work. Dominic didn't want to be there either. Another example of the white code? I thought the same thing. I was like, ooh, is this, would they have done the same thing if it was a white person who was there slumped over in the car and, you know, let's call the police, at least get the paramedics out to make sure, you know? Uh, let's see, number, number three, Kenny Paulson, the teenage witness and his father last night, he said the shooter was white. Now he said he didn't know the man's skin color. Did his memory get fuzzier after talking with his parent? Question, I think fuzzier or fuzzy is in the word guide, uh, when talking about thinking, fuzzy hair, black people. Uh, let's see, getting to some of my notes, untiljustice@gmail.com, if y'all have any notes to share, let me back up. I just thought it was noteworthy, she gives her father like a shout out, he was a police officer and in the Marines, like, coming from a family of, I mean, that is white-trained killers, different outfits, right? Uh, I, what's Buffalo Police Department, what's their record on white supremacy racism? The Marines, that's an easy one, but like, that's, I just thought that in a book like this, that's how we start with a shout out to a white-trained killer and enforcement officer in Buffalo. All right, uh, part one, the twenty-two caliber killer. I would have to do some digging, who is Abraham Joshua Heschel? Racism is man's gravest threat to man, the maximum of hatred for a minimum of reason. I don't even know what that means, I want to know who that is though, why she wanted to start the book off with that. Uh, let's see, yeah, the Tops Grocery Store, I'm just, man, um, hmm. They're watching Monday Night Football and not seeing OJ Simpson, uh, let's see. They got off-duty police officer again, incredible. Uh, let's see. They're eating submarine sandwiches, uh, and watching Monday Night Football, the detectives, uh, we've been talking about the food deserts, uh, and we just had all that talk from Strom Thurman in Dear Senator about eating well and put all that fried food down and processed foods, eat some fruits and vegetables. A submarine sandwich, probably washed down with a beer, pretzels, does not exactly qualify as, uh, healthy, eating to give, eating to live to a hundred and one, say it that way, and all the brain damage with the football. Uh, let's see, we got great reference, uh, Henry in Chicago about Mark Twain and, uh, F. Scott Fitzgerald, uh, they do indeed have the reference to, uh, Lothar Stoddard in The Great Gatsby, which, uh, we did read Lothar Stoddard in the book club, absolutely. Uh, let's see, next, the, unfortunately, Glenn is in this stolen car at the time when he is murdered. I know Dr. Kamau Kamban has talked repeatedly, uh, over the years, the times that he's visited about being cautious about, uh, if you're a young person or even if you're an older person, uh, about just hopping in somebody's, uh, vehicle, uh, because if this had not ended so tragically, let's just say that they're out, you know, joyriding, having a good time, and then they get stopped, now you've just got two black males in a sto- like, this could have ended with both of them getting shot by enforcement officers and them getting an award, like, we got these, you know, ring, as he said, hey, got a ring of car thieves out here, so I mean, hey, you know? And, uh, they could have been up to no good and all the rest of it, so good job and we all get a raise and, you know, that's just that. So at minimum, certainly be mindful about just hopping in anyone's car. And even when you find out, when he says he dropped this, this news on, like, hey, uh, Larry, uh, we, we, I stole this car. He's like, what? Well, I'm already in the hot car now, go ahead and let me, you know, drop me at the store so I can, you know, pick up whatever I can, pick up at like, uh, I think I'm going to walk, brother. Like, I hope they got a bus, I'm going to walk, they didn't have Uber at the time, so no cell phone, I got limited options, but I am not going to be caught in a stolen car two, it's not even just one, two, um, I'm good. I'm, I'd much rather take my chances, walk in like, uh, yeah, and I think you should take this car back too. Be good, peace out. Uh, let's see, next, so fourteen years old, I think I read that when I was going back because I didn't know all the details of the case, I just knew that this happened and hearts are carved out of blackmail's chest, uh, but I didn't know all the, the gruesomeness, but fourteen years old? Jeez, like, I mean, what, they called in court today, they called, uh, Peyton Gendron, they called him a coward and that's, man, you are a coward and a race soldier going to a grocery store? This is the same exact thing, a fourteen-year-old smoking a cigarette, oh, didn't we just do that report on menthol cigarette? Didn't we just do that like days ago? They didn't say it was a menthol cigarette, but I mean, hmm, four, where'd you get the cigarette from, man? How about that? If we want to have policing come in and heavy-handed, where'd you get that cigarette from, man? Did you buy that? Somebody give that to you? Got a whole lot of ways, Dylan Roof, Peyton Gendron, maybe we don't put a Tops in your neighborhood at all, you have to go two hours to get to a grocery store, to get some- Got a whole lot of ways, Dillon Roof, Peyton Gendron, maybe we don't put a Tops in your neighborhood at all, you have to go two hours to get to a grocery store to get some High Fruit Coast corn syrup and menthol cigarettes. White supremacy racism is war, terrorism, terrorism against black people in all areas of people activity. Sometimes it takes a little longer, sometimes it's fourteen years old, again, how is this not mentioned? Continuing, let's see... They, now see, even in this one, they said they saw this strange figure in a hoodie. Now, how is it that you can be a white person in a hoodie and that's no big deal, the police don't pull you over and beat you down, and hey, are you smuggling narcotics? What are you doing around this neighborhood, you got that hoodie on, man, we don't take kindly to you, you in a gang? You could be white, wear a hoodie, go out and shoot people, and hey? Let's see... Fourteen years old. Uh, so they find out the car's been stolen, uh, they say that this was easy enough, new car, ten thousand dollars. Ex- expensive new cars were generally not found in driveways over here on Buffalo's east side, now that is the same area as the Tops shooting. Crumbling houses and overcrowded flats, yes, poverty, unemployment, and deprivation, sure, the east side had plenty of that, now, why is that? White author here for sure, why is that the case, so the Negroes just defunct? Have been defunct, I guess, for twenty years, cause nothing's, or excuse me, forty years, because nothing's changed, half-century of defunct Negroes in east side Buffalo. Uh, let's see, she said it hadn't always been this way, in fact, it had been anything but this way, now, that's even more intriguing, so it was nice, but then the Negroes moved in, the manufacturing jobs moved out, and now it's lapitated and niggardly, with no grocery stores. Uh, let's see... I'm gonna have to go check out the New York Times report, and again, as he said, like, hey, or if that's in, Edward Baptist said, hey, the reason so few slaves escaped is because you effectively faced an entire army of whites who would oppose you, because white people all over the so-called country, at a time when you didn't even have a whole lot of white people, or a whole lot of country. All of them were profiting from mistreating black people, so it's just different forms of the same thing. Let's see, have to check Sundown House to even see about, uh, if Buffalo is mentioned there, I'll double-check and give us more info. Uh, they continue, um... When they talked about Olmstead Parks being carved through with expressways, neighborhoods of single-family homes had been bulldozed to make way for high-rise public housing projects. That's one right there, and skyrocketing taxes, didn't we just talk about that with Detroit over taxation of black people? All of that, I would like a lot more detail, now, how did this contribute to black people being in the condition that they're in even right now in Buffalo? Lots more detail about that, uh, and particularly when they did the Olmstead Park destruction, was that imminent domain? Like, who got bumped and moved out to do all of that? Uh, they continue... Let's see... They talk about the switch from so-called German and Polish ancestry, we just said, in fact, talked about that with, uh, Gerald Van Duzen. He was talking about nineteen forties, how the second generation of these immigrants, hey, we are white, and we demonstrate this by mistreating the Negro. We galvanize, that was a word he used, all of these whites galvanized, coalesced in their so-called, or, or as members of the white race, in bru- in violence against black people, keeping them out of housing and all kinds of different things. That's why I asked about the Olmstead Park destruction. Uh, let's see... As the city's African-American population grew and its civil rights legislation had legally broken the boundaries of where they were permitted to live, black families had gradually begun moving from their own section of the Lower East Side, the area where blacks had traditionally lived. Now, see, is that traditionally lived, or that's where they were warehoused? This is the only place where they were allowed to live, that's another, we do have, you know, white author. Uh, throughout the nineteen seventies, more and more black families had moved into homes vacated by whites, white flight, as was mentioned, or not mentioned directly in the book, I think that was Henry in Chicago. Uh, let's see... Amherst Kenmore, that's why I said I have to check to see if they're in Sundown Towns. Glenn Dunn, fourteen years old, let's see... They, Glenn is fourteen years old, now, this reminded me of Kenneth O'Reilly, Racial Matters. He talks about how saturated areas where black people are allowed to live are with FBI agents, and, you know, you gotta keep an eye on you all, you're suspicious, we know we treat you like garbage. Had Glenn Dunn been an informant, he's fourteen years old, did they have fourteen-year-old informants? Is that even reasonable, like, to think, maybe this fourteen-year-old was on the FBI payroll, using them to keep tabs? Did they do that, they use teens? Killed for working with the cops on the side, a quick call to the robbery division could answer, then, I mean, I guess he thought it was reasonable, cause he had to verify. Let's see... Where'd he get that cigarette from? Uh, Mr. Paulson, this white Kenny Paulson, as I said, reminded me of Cato, even got that K thing going. I think that's just an act of white supremacy racism, and I mean, really, if you even wanna pause right there for the racism? Now, this guy, and in fact, we have multiple individuals, and we're only in two chapters of the book, multiple individuals, white people, I see a white person at the scene of a crime, crime, and they fail to identify that white person to the police. Enforcement officers are even wondering, maybe this one white guy is doing it deliberately, because he doesn't wanna identify a white person. I thought black people are the ones who get accused of not cooperating with the police, no snitching, got all those videos and stuff, besmirch, uh, Carmelo Anthony, right? I said for years, the masters of the no-snitch code, racist man, racist woman, racist child, I mean, this is a disgrace. You got someone out here killing fourteen-year-olds, and, oh, I don't, I don't quite remember, uh, and now you come back to OJ Simpson, so if they do that for white people, do they do that for the OJ Simpsons? We'll just make up and pretend that it was a black person, even though, nah, we know, we know OJ didn't do it, but, you know, Negroes, yeah, he did it, he did it. Messed us over here in Buffalo, anyway. Chapter two, let's see, yeah, I thought this was really disgraceful too, man, where they, you know, Dominic, is it Pun- Punterero? Punterero, I guess that's how you say it, uh, and Linda Snyder, they go to Jean Rises as well, they're at the Burger King, all this bad, he can't even go somewhere healthy to get something to eat, and this black guy slumped over, again, like, you don't have to do CPR, you don't have to touch him, I guess, and that is broad daylight, it's not, and they're at a Burger King, so it's not like they're on a back alley at, you know, one AM. It's broad daylight, you're at a fast-food restaurant, it's other people around, uh, at least with Linda Snyder, you're not by yourself, they could have easily, hey, let's just go call the police, or go tell them, the guy outside, I think you should call nine-one-one, he slumped over, I beeped the horn, he didn't respond, I think you should call paramedics to go and, and check on him, seems like he might not be okay. No, it's real, eh, I'm trying to get out of here, he's got smoke coming from his head, and let's go, eh, I come on, I don't think he would have lived, but I mean, man, Black Lives Matter, urgency, I say that all the time, racism, white supremacy, there should be a sense of urgency, and with individuals classified as black, that just generally is not there at all. Uh, let's see... Get it, this is the area where you don't have cell phones, so they couldn't just hop in the car and, you know, dial and, and dash. Uh, oh, I thought this was so important, man, phew, they said Peyton Gendron, when he shot, uh, Aaron Salter, senior, black male, thirty years as a police officer, and he gets murdered as a security guard at a Tops grocery store? By an eighteen-year-old race soldier? He had on tactical gear, Mr. Salter fired, didn't matter, I came prepared, now, what did they say in the text? Both the man's behavior and his appearance struck Russell as odd. He wore a fishing hat and a faded jacket, his pants seemed a bit too short, the clothing had been the thing that first caught Russell's attention, because his whole outfit seemed out of place. He looked like he was dressed to go hunting. He was, as was Peyton Gendron, as was Dillon Roof, and just on, and as was Strom Thurmond. They don't have to have fatigues and a weapon on to accomplish the same, the same effect, even the Savannah River Plant that we talked about, nuclear facility, where they poison the whole area, and then hire black people and don't pay them, if they hire them at all, or give them the jobs, or they put them, yes, uh, take off your, uh, mechanical safety equipment, okay, we need you to go in that back room, don't ask too many questions, okay, go in the back room, and we said, tch, 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 well, it's safe, just don't get, matter of fact, don't touch anything, just go back there and clean, don't touch anything when you come out, we'll hose you down and everything, don't touch anything, or touch me, we'll be upstairs, matter of fact, I'm gonna be in the next building, but you go over there and just clean up that whole area back there, we had a little spill, I mean, uh, you know, just, yeah, just clean up back there, and we'll get you later. That right there is hunting, same effect, we talked about that, black people died, poisoned, radiation poisoned, ended up dying in their forties and what have you, couldn't live to a hundred either, that's all the same thing. Go hunting. They said that about Peyton Gendron though, that he seemed odd, they had a black cashier at Tops who said that she saw him two days before, and he seemed odd. I said, when we read Gavin de Becker, The Gift of Fear, you get that feeling, that suspicion for a reason, honor it. Even if you can't figure out all the details, what's going on, or what have you, you're getting that sense for a reason. We especially classified as black, we are trained to ignore that, oh, you're just being suspicious, oh, my, you're so paranoid, you're just like a little racist yourself, see, they're just thinking that way, that all white people out to get you in the boogeyman seat, that's how we've been conditioned, and again, these are the same people who lived through Joseph G. Christopher, lived in New York, lived in New Jersey, lived in upstate New York. Don't remember this case. Let's see... I would love to know more information about Al Williams, Buffalo homicide squad, uh, he was the only black cadet in his graduating class of February nineteen sixty-eight, that is two months before the assassination of Dr. King. Uh, let's see, he was the only black detective on the force, like, whoa, I would love to know more information. Um, and he talks about being struck too by the murder of a black child, how can you not be? Uh, this Madonna, different white woman who comes in, uh, and Madonna Gorney, she, she's mentioning people by their first name, I don't like that, Madonna Gorney, um, she sees this white man and she forgets, now, you know? Hey, so if this had been a black fella, just happened to be at the scene where this strange crime took place, do we think that she would have just forgot to mention him? Just the fact that it happened twice, where, and it seems that the person that they are forgetting or unwilling to give all the information is the killer. I don't think they knew this white guy, they didn't give any information, I don't think they said that Kenny Paulson knew the suspect or had seen him before, so I mean, is this common? A white person sees someone, and especially if they know that the crime, the victim was a Negro, is this common where their memory gets bad, what they say, memory gets fuzzy? That's in the word guide, as I said, where, oh, I don't, even a murder, I mean, we're not talking about, like, shoplifting, or, you know, petty vandalism or something, he wrote Negro on your BMW or what have you, we're talking about, he killed a child. Oh, yeah, I don't, yeah, my memory, I just, I can't, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't remember, was there an earthquake last night, did you feel that? How common is that, that's one to think about too, let's see... She forgets to mention, Lord. Reminded me of OJ Simpson, when they said it wasn't unheard of for a witness of a shooting to have little recollection of the perpetrator, witnesses are often transfixed by the gun itself rather than the person firing it, reminded me greatly of, uh, OJ Simpson and all these, you know, jail chivalry and phony witness accounts. Yeah, now, this even reminded me, we read Lucky at the beginning of the year, this is the second time where we've had a police officer who thinks that a white person is not being honest in reporting information involving a black person. This time, a black victim, white witness, where they think the white witness is not being forthcoming. Hmm... Let's see... I thought, I think that was Henry in Chicago who talked about, um, Mr. Green, Harold Green, and how constructive, he's trying to be an engineer, he's going to school, he's not running around raping women and all that, and he's served in the Air Force, honorable discharge, used, she said he used his limited spare time productively, spending every Saturday working around his home or his mother's, cleaning, that's right on Mr. Fuller's list for uses of time and energy. And he gets killed at thirty-two, again, hey, it's a whole lot of ways, it's no way you're gonna make it to a hundred, we already got that planned out. Fourteen, thirty-two, S.E. May, that was, her mother was thirty-eight, her husband, forty-six. Nobody's getting to a hundred, I didn't see any hundreds of the folks who got, uh, murdered at Tops. Not gonna get to a hundred, no sir. Food deserts, Dillon Storm Roof, we got a whole lot of ways, you're not gonna get to a hundred, buddy. Not gonna be a whole lot of Needley Fuller Juniors out there, no way. I will pause there, uh, we will get to our second audio segment now, so if we missed you totally, or if you have additional comments, write a note, and we'll have ample time for our second session of sharing. Uh, this is Catherine Pelanero, Absolute Madness, The Twenty-two Caliber Killer, Joseph G. Christopher. They say, uh, those people with two first names are, you know, suspicious, that's what they say, right? Context of White Supremacy, audio segment number two.
Chapter three, Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty. Joseph McCoy had no reason to fear walking the streets. He made a habit of walking every day, setting out from his home on Pierce Avenue in Niagara Falls for a leisurely stroll. McCoy had been unemployed for the past two years, but he was not one to sit at home. Always an active man, fit and muscular, McCoy had been a boxer in his younger days. He was now forty-three years old, a lifelong bachelor, living a quiet life and staying close to his siblings and elderly parents. Twenty miles north of Buffalo, Niagara Falls had a constant flow of tourists visiting the majestic waterfall. Aside from the tourism trade, confined mainly to the actual falls and a smattering of attractions along the banks of the Niagara River. The city itself was more like a sleepy town, and perhaps even drearier these days than the rest of the region. Niagara Falls shared all of Buffalo's economic problems, but with the added infamy of Love Canal. A neighborhood at the eastern edge of the city that had been in national headlines a lot during the past two years, because of the scandal over massive toxic chem- a lot during the past two years because of the scandal over massive toxic chemicals in the ground and drinking water and the scores of poisoned residents who had to be relocated. At nine AM, Joe McCoy was walking alone on a section of Cleveland Avenue, many blocks away from the river and the tourists. A motorist who was stopped at a red light noticed McCoy approached the intersection of Cleveland and Eleventh Street. A white man came up behind McCoy and grabbed him around the neck, pulling his head downward. One witness mistook this at first for two friends clowning around, jumping at each other like guys sometimes do, until the white man held a brown paper bag to the black man's head and fired two shots. Joe McCoy fell to the ground and the white man fled down Cleveland Avenue. A Niagara Falls police officer on patrol spotted McCoy lying in the street and pulled over. Two people were standing over the victim. They told the officer that the man had just been shot by another man who ran away. The officer had missed the shooting by less than a minute. There were no shell casings on the ground, only the body of Joseph McCoy, blood oozing from contact gunshot wounds in his left temple. He was transported to a Niagara Falls hospital where he was pronounced dead on arrival at nine eighteen AM. Emmanuel Thomas had been pronounced dead on arrival at the Erie County Medical Center the night before. At his autopsy in the morning, the pathologist had removed a bullet from his head. Police had recovered three spent twenty-two caliber long rifle shell casings at the scene. Only one bullet had struck Emmanuel, but it had been fired at close range and cut a path through his brain, killing him instantly. The only other abnormalities on his body were track marks on both of his arms, apparently from intravenous drug use. The marks on his right arm looked fresh. Thomas had been arrested in nineteen seventy-four on a minor drug charge for marijuana possession, but had no record since. Buffalo Police had found several witnesses to the shooting and had spent the wee hours of Wednesday morning questioning them. Emmanuel's distraught wife, Dorothy, did her best to answer their questions while at the same time comforting her two young daughters, who were confused and inconsolable over the loss of their father. Dorothy had no idea who would want to harm her husband. Emmanuel was a good family man, she told them. They had been married for a decade and had lived on Zenner Street for years. Emmanuel was a painter by trade, but had been laid off. He was actively looking for work and otherwise spent his time at home with her and their children. Emmanuel had used hard drugs a number of years ago, but in nineteen seventy-six, he went on a methadone program and kicked the habit. She had in fact questioned Emmanuel last week about the marks on his arm, but he told her they had come from a fight he had had with someone and denied he was using drugs. The only problem they had had recently was a dispute with a neighbor, a black male who had fired a shot over Dorothy's head with a shotgun last summer. They had a pending legal action against this neighbor and the incident had produced some arguments between them and him. They had gotten a bit behind on their rent last year and still owed their landlords a hundred twenty-five dollars in back rent, which they had agreed to pay off a little each month. These were the only difficulties they had. Dorothy could not think of anyone who would have wanted Emmanuel dead. Neither could Frenchy Cook, who had come to police headquarters that morning to give a formal statement to Detective Paul Delano. Frenchy described Emmanuel as a homebody, no girlfriends or women on the side, a guy who never got into trouble and never went anywhere outside his own neighborhood. Asked if Emmanuel used or was involved in selling drugs, Frenchy replied that if he was, Frenchy didn't know about it. Frenchy repeated the chain of events. Nothing unusual had happened that night until a minute or so before the shooting. I was standing on the bottom stairs and Emmanuel was talking to someone at the door, Frenchy explained. Then this guy comes up to me and says, hey, you know where Diane or Dorothy lives? It was either Diane or Dorothy, but Frenchy wasn't sure which. I told him, no, I don't know where she lives. So he walked away. Emmanuel came out and we started to walk across the street. The same guy comes up behind us. He said, hey, and we both turned around. He shot the first time and I heard Emmanuel holler. I ran behind some cars and then I ran out across Zenner Street toward East Ferry. I ducked behind a car and I heard two more shots. Was the guy who you talked to white or black? Delano asked. White. Can you describe him for me? He was about five foot nine, clean shaven, about nineteen years old. He was wearing a blue snorkel jacket without the hood, a short one. He also had a navy watch cap. I think it was black. He also had on blue jeans. Have you ever seen this white man before? No. After the other two shots, what did you do? After I saw all the people coming out of their houses, Frenchy said, I got out from behind the car and that's when I saw Emmanuel lying on the ground. Detective Delano asked if Emmanuel said anything when he was lying in the street and if Frenchy saw the gun that the white man fired. Frenchy answered no to both questions. As far as the gun, all he saw was the flame coming out of the barrel. The gunman had been standing only ten feet behind them. This white guy, was he alone both times you saw him? Delano asked. Yes, Frenchy answered. The guy had not given a last name of the Diane or Dorothy he claimed to be looking for, and Frenchy said he didn't see anybody else around when the shooting took place. Has there been any trouble in the area with any white people recently? Delano asked. No, Frenchy answered. Did the white guy act like he was trying to hold you up? No, he never asked for nothing. He just said, hey, and started shooting. Would you be able to recognize this person if you saw him again? The detective asked. Yes, I definitely would. A teenage girl had also been brought downtown to give a statement. She told Detective Delano that she and her eleven-year-old sister were standing near the intersection of Zenner and Ferry when a light blue car with two men inside stopped at the corner. One of the men got out. She described him as a white man wearing a dark hat, jeans and a short jacket. He looked eighteen or nineteen years old, about five feet eight, with a thin build and short hair. She had turned away to speak to a friend and didn't look back toward the corner until she heard three or four shots and saw someone running. She ran over and saw Emmanuel lying in the street. She didn't know what became of the blue car or the white man, and she couldn't describe the other man she had seen sitting in the car. A young man told police he had been in the living room of his home on Zenner when he heard at least four shots. He went out on his porch and saw a white male wearing a dark hunting cap and a short jacket get into the driver's side of a dark blue car and drive north on Zenner at a normal speed. Another witness claimed the blue car had sped off down Ferry Street. Despite the discrepancies, which were not unusual when it came to eyewitness accounts, Buffalo Police knew they were looking for one or possibly two men, at least one of whom was a young white male of average height and build, who took off in a car that was some shade of blue. There wasn't much to go on, but it was more than they had for the Glenn Dunn homicide. With the similarities and proximity to the two attacks and the fact they had occurred barely more than twenty-four hours apart, the possibility of a connection had to be considered, though until ballistics tests were done, it remained only a possibility. The shooting of Harold Green the day before in Cheektawaga stayed very much on the radar of Buffalo detectives with its eerie resemblance to the killing of the Dunn boy, though it still seemed unlikely that the same assailant had targeted two victims, much less three, with such disparate profiles. Harold Green remained in critical condition at the hospital. He had so far not regained consciousness. X-rays revealed two small caliber bullet marks, one on top of his head, the other on the left side of his head. Surgery had yielded one bullet and fragments. A second bullet remained in his brain. A check of Harold Green's background and lifestyle revealed exactly what his family members had claimed. Harold was a devoted professional man with no questionable associates or activities, no skeletons in his orderly closets. His mother and sister had given permission for a search of his residence, which turned up nothing of note, but a small amount of marijuana and a registered twenty-two caliber semi-automatic pistol, for which Harold had a permit. Witness Linda Snyder, after returning to work and gathering her wits, had given a statement to Cheektawaga Police. A composite sketch of the suspect had immediately been put together based on the descriptions given by the three witnesses at the Burger King and was released that afternoon. The suspect sought was a white male, thirty to thirty-five years old, five feet ten, with a pale complexion and a chubby face, wearing khaki pants and a pork pie hat. Witnesses had described the hat as either a fishing type or pork pie. Whatever the exact style, they all agreed it was light in color and had a brim. On the Glenn Dunn investigation, John Reagan and Melvin Lobbitt had determined that the stolen car, in all likelihood, had nothing to do with Glenn's murder. The auto theft seemed to be linked to adolescent stupidity rather than a crime ring. On the day of his death, Glenn and two young accomplices had apparently stolen three nineteen eighty-one Buicks from a dealership in Cheektawaga. The other two cars had been recovered Tuesday morning. No other witnesses to Glenn's murder had turned up, and the only thing to be found at the home of the Dunn family was grief. Glenn had been one of eight children living in a cramped home on Fugaron Street with their parents and grandmother. Glenn was a fairly quiet teenager who liked sports, his family said. He played basketball outside with the other kids. He had hopes of making the high school football team. As far as they knew, the stolen Buick was the only lawbreaking he'd ever done. Glenn's background, so to speak, wasn't much different than that of any other boy who'd only lived for fourteen years. This is where matters stood early on September twenty-fourth. Three gun assaults that required further investigation and ballistics analysis, enough similarities to take note, but not enough to cause panic. But now, there was the murder in Niagara Falls. Details from the McCoy shooting were still sparse, but the suspect's description was a white male, mid-twenties, five feet eight to ten, with a slender build, neck length, dirty blonde hair, who shot his victim in the left side of the head at close range and fled. Four ambush-style shootings within thirty-six hours, four black male victims, and maybe one white assailant. If news of the fatal shooting of Joseph McCoy struck the region like a bolt of lightning on this otherwise sunny Wednesday, the lightning rod that most keenly absorbed its impact was Buffalo Police Headquarters. The homicide bureau took up several rooms on the third floor at seventy-four Franklin Street. Homicide was typically a bustling division, but in the past hours, as information filtered in from law enforcement in Cheektawaga and Niagara Falls, the normal buzz and exchange had intensified. No one wanted to jump to what might well turn out to be a wild conclusion, least of all professionals who are trained to weed out red herrings and value hard evidence over assumptions. The similarities here, however, though not yet conclusively linked, could not be overlooked. Of course, the police were not the only ones with a keen interest in whether the attacks were connected. The local media had been inquiring on an hourly basis. With the fourth shooting in the Falls came a new urgency for answers and comments from investigators, of which there were now many, spread over three separate municipalities in western New York. In addition to John Reagan, Melvin Lobbitt, Al Williams and Paul Delano, there were now numerous other detectives and patrol officers working on the Dunn and Thomas murders in Buffalo, canvassing neighborhoods, taking statements and gathering evidence. All of the collected information was destined for Room Three Twenty-Eight, the private office of a man whose job it was to oversee an investigation when one human being killed another in the city of Buffalo. Leo Donovan had been chief of homicide for close to two decades, a police officer for almost four. Donovan had a reputation as a consummate lawman, a cop's cop, and a native son of the city's Irish First Ward. He had joined the force as a patrolman after serving in the Navy during World War II. Donovan had worked several different details prior to his ascension to the head of the homicide division in nineteen sixty-four. In his early days as a young patrolman, one of his first partners was James Cunningham, the current police commissioner. Donovan had at one time been commander of the motorcycle squad. Once he reached homicide, however, Leo Donovan had truly hit his stride. This was work he was born to do, with his analytical mind and penchant for deciphering the logic in situations where there appeared to be none. Chief Donovan had already spent the better part of this Wednesday morning in conversation with both his own detectives and his counterparts in Cheektawaga and of late Niagara Falls. At noon, Donovan removed several recent additions from the evidence safe in his office. The evidence gathering unit had delivered a total of twelve packets on the Dunn homicide and seven on Thomas. Cheektawaga Police had brought over their ballistics evidence from the Green shooting. Donovan had all of it delivered to the Central Police Services Lab on the fourth floor to the custody of ballisticsian Michael Dujanovich. The directive was clear. Ballistics tests should be done without delay. A scientific link should be established or ruled out as soon as possible. Donovan planned a meeting for the following day in his office with top brass from all three jurisdictions. Evidence from Joseph McCoy's shooting could only be obtained through his autopsy, once the bullets that had killed him could be extracted from his head. Niagara Falls would provide it to the lab for comparison as soon as it became available. That day's late edition of the Buffalo Evening News ran a story with the headline, "Two More Executed: Police Look For Link." Before the day was done, there was no longer any doubt. The police lab determined that bullets retrieved from the bodies of Glenn Dunn, Emmanuel Thomas and Harold Green had all been fired from the same twenty-two caliber weapon.
Context of white supremacy. So we will pause there and pick up next Thursday, same time, eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific, and we'll be starting chapter four. The number is seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred. Code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. That is amazing. She does, I think, one of our investors, when he wrote it, he said he knew about Son of Sam and Mr. Goetz. And I already said, you know, I saw the report about him. Son of Sam is mentioned at the very, very, very beginning, like first paragraph of the next chapter, chapter four. And I was thinking like, wow, I bet tons of folks know about the Son of Sam, which is an older case, but like, wow, if you are a black person, you should know way more about the twenty-two caliber killer than the Son of Sam, and it's a more recent case. Uh, let's see. Uh, folks who dialed in with a hand up if you have commentary to share, uh, line should be open. So let's see, our caller in California, retired firefighter, Henry in Chicago, uh, our other caller, nine zero two nine, all should be with us. Uh, if you have not shared at all and think you have something, uh, you'd like to get in, question, comment, do not wait until the last minute. Go ahead, press star six one and we will get you on the line immediately. Uh, if you have commentary, proceed.
Can I be heard? May I be heard? Oh, go ahead, sir.
Henry in Chicago, thank you for yielding.
All right, thank you. Um, the only thing I picked up from reading is, uh, the mention of Love Canal, which was referencing Packing Them In. So I kinda caught that, kinda caught that reference, uh, uh, from Packing Them In. I think, uh, I pulled up the, uh, pulled up the book and it was talking about, uh, uh, Dr. Washington, who wrote the book, Packing Them In, talking about the, um, the, the poor white community of Buffalo who, you know, suffer from, I guess, this, uh, toxic waste, which kinda make me, kinda makes me think, uh, probably why the white population, uh, has gone down because, uh, this basically happened, um, this basically happened in the, in the, in the sixty and seventies. Uh, and actually, it kinda ended in seventy-eight because according to Dr. Washington, um, uh, Jimmy- um, uh, uh, Jimmy, then President Jimmy Carter declared Love Canal, uh, a disaster area. And so this is when the mass exit, the exit of, uh, Buffalo, uh, white Buffalo, uh, residents had, had moved out, so, uh, it kinda makes me think that this might have been a cause of, you know, the Buffalo area being evacuated by white people and then, you know, moving black people in, uh, to this area. Um, I did a, uh, I was looking at the, uh, the reviews of this book on Amazon, and I noticed when people, you know, talked about the book, uh, nobody mentioned anything about racism or white supremacy. Uh, they hailed it as a great history novel or whatever. So I got the, I got the Kindle version and I did, did a word kind of racism. And I counted seven instances of the word racism, and that is including that, uh, that quote that was in the beginning. So, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda wondering about that as well, uh, you know, what the author is trying to convey here. Uh, so, uh, that's all I have on my line.
The word count, the word count, that can be very informative, and particularly in a book like this. I don't know, the N-word might be in here more times than the word racism, like, yikes, that's crazy. Uh, we'll have to say, because I haven't read this one yet. Now, that is amazing, because he was referencing Love Canal, and he said, oh, man, that's in, uh, Dr. Sylvia Hood Washington, she was a guest on the program, and we read, uh, Packing Them In, the book club, and she talked about it there. I was thinking, was that in Harriet A. Washington's "A Terrible Thing To Waste"? And it is. Uh, and she says about Love Canal, she says, according to a two thousand fourteen report, "Who's in Danger: A Demographic Analysis of Chemical Disaster Vulnerability Zones." "The percentage of African-Americans in the fence-line zones near chemical plants is seventy-five percent greater than for the United States as a whole, and the percentage of Latinos is sixty percent greater. These fence-line communities are most often home to people of color, but they rarely receive the media attention of Love Canal, and they are not always poor." She has other mentions of Love Canal in the book, but that's just one really good one. And racism isn't mentioned in this book. He said, I think, seven times it was. Harriet A. Washington, top ten, two times, medical apartheid and a terrible thing to waste. Uh, let's see, other, uh, we had a courteous yield, I guess we'll call it, uh, our caller, he yielded for Henry in Chicago.
Yeah, greetings, greetings again, um, nine zero two nine. I haven't even come up with a handle yet, but I'll do that another time, but the, the part of this was just, started to really get frustrating was listening to this author talk about the victim, Emmanuel, and it just, it's actually getting me angry a little bit. Where she's talking about him and she's going, he was a good man, but he was out of work. He was a good man, but he was a drug user. He was a good man, but he was behind on rent. But he was okay, though, you know, wasn't, uh, wasn't doing all these bad things, and it started to just sound ridiculous because when I think about it, I don't recall when they do this to white people. Like, when they talk about a victim that's white in a crime, they don't go into their background like this and talk about if they paid rent. Um, I just thought that was just, it was just beyond, like, ridiculous, like, it was just so small and minute and just tacky, as you would say, man, like, I, I couldn't even bring that in. And drug use, what does that have to do with him being a victim? You know, like, it's different if, I, I can understand if he, there was some story where he went to somebody to do some kind of drug transaction and that occurred, but what does that have to do with him being murdered? Like, I just, uh, yeah, that was, that was the real tough part, I, I actually have to say, I listened to about this that kinda frustrated me. And of course, they had to say he was out of work, and of course, you know, um, you know, he's behind on rent, like, those things just, you know, those things irritated me quite a bit, um, listening to this segment, you know, um. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I kinda wanted to just tune out at, at, at a certain point when I was hearing that, but I was like, I have to get through it and make sure I get, get, um, just that point in and, and, um, you know, address that to some degree, because I, I think it should be addressed. Um, anyway, that is, that is all I have to say. I will leave my line. Thank you.
Much obliged. Uh, our caller, he said he'll come up with a handle at some point, nine zero two nine. Uh, much obliged, uh, for the commentary. Harriet A. Washington did not write this book. Very important to kinda point that out as we roll, uh, a white author, a white woman, Catherine Pelanero, wrote this here text, so keep that in mind as we roll, uh, places where she might be practicing white supremacy. Uh, let's see, other folks who dialed in, victim in New Jersey, tri-state area, right? Uh, you should be with us as well. I don't think we've heard from you at all. If you have commentary, proceed, sir.
Um, yes, um, yeah, uh, as the last, uh, caller stated, I noticed the same thing. It's kind of, uh, uh, kind of like typical, um, of the, uh, just kinda bringing up the, uh, the background, um, of just, you know, of, uh, black males, you know, um, unemployed, some kind of drug use, um, I mean, even when victims are, you know, we see that now, even when the victims are killed. Um, you know, eighteen, you know, they, they can criminalize little to mere rights, though. They criminalized the father, you know, had to pour up some dirt on him. Um, after what happened in Buffalo and also learning what happened with this situation, um, you know, now, it makes me kinda suspicious, and there were, uh, people who are suspicious about, um, the, the revelations and, and, you know, every time there's a weekend, like Memorial Day weekend, they talk about the, uh, murder rate in Chicago, you know what I mean? And it just makes me wonder, you know, I mean, you know, possibly could, you know, could races be, is basically, you know, on the weekends, you know, three-day weekends, Memorial Day weekends, going to these places and, you know, just doing random shooting, you know, just for sport. Um, I don't think that this person, um, is a serial killer. I just really just think this person is just basically, um, somebody that was dedicated on terrorizing black people. And, you know, and thought he can just, you know, thought he can get away with it because he was targeting black people and black males, but, um, yeah, but this, uh, the author is definitely despicable about bringing up, you know, the, uh, the Negroes without, the males without jobs and on drugs, you know. Not, not really worthy of some pity, but, you know, not really worthy of pity, you know, just like we seen the, uh, uh, there was an article where there was correction officer that was making jokes about this recent incident. You know, made a meme, you know, said, "Clean up in hour one, clean up in hour two", you know, made a joke about the murder of black people this past weekend, so. I don't, it's, you know, it's to be expected. I quote.
To be expected. I will say, that has been frequently the dilemma, well, I won't say dilemma, well, yeah, dilemma for Gus T. for many years, uh, that there are not very many resources on Joseph G. Christopher and this incident, which I think is super important, especially so now. Unfortunately, the experts on white supremacy racism are white. So, frequently, as with the cows, we try to do the best we can, we do both, learn and point, and even just learn how white supremacy racism is practiced as we try to get constructive information on the subject matter, so hopefully we can do double duty, because I think this is a super important historical event context. Other folks who dialed in with a hand up, uh, if you have commentary to share, proceed.
Yes, sir. I was, uh, just listening to, uh, all through the reading, the details, uh, on what the, uh, race soldier assailant, uh, used into, uh, killing, uh, these victims of racism and white supremacy. Uh, uh, a twenty-two caliber, uh, pistol, I believe. Uh, it's not exactly, uh, the, the, the most, uh, desired, quote-unquote, uh, means of, uh, uh, killing. Uh, but in the case of what he was doing, the, I, I think because black people do not have a healthy level of distrust of white people under a global system of racism and white supremacy, you can get, a white person can get very close to a non-white person with very little suspicion and, uh, get, uh, get that dastardly work done, uh, to a victim of racism and white supremacy. Uh, the, uh, recent Buffalo-New York killer, uh, describes that in his manifesto, uh, also in, in Buffalo and New York period. Uh, I don't, I don't know about in nineteen eighty, but definitely now, the gun, the gun, uh, uh, rights are, the, the gun restrictions are very hard in New York, in the state of New York. I don't know what it was back during that time, for sure. Uh, but I, I, I amized basically that the, the, this undeserved trust that we have for white people. Uh, I, I've, I've even, I've even, uh, invited some non-white black people to tune in to, to, uh, the cows when we're talking to a white person, and, and the, the person that I've, uh, 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 asked to come, to come and listen to the program, uh, thought, would think it's kinda strange or how, how we talk to a white person. So, that unhealthy means of trust for white people is, unfortunately, is still prevalent. It's still prevalent. Uh, and I'm, I'm not talking about being rude or anything like that, but it's, it should be, it should be like the same way that you would deal with a white person, uh, in the workplace, in a professional, serious manner, and, uh, get, you know, you know, get specifics established, uh, you know, that sort of thing, and, uh, I'm just, you know, just listening to the details and, and thinking about how that adjusts us to uh, exactly what took place a couple of days ago. And some of the reasons why that non-white black people are very vulnerable to white people, even in areas where the majority of the people are non-white and it's a white person walking around. It, it's to be assumed that it's something for, because the white person don't need to be around us for anything. They don't, they don't need to be around us for anything, so it should be a suspicion just off of that. You know, not, not put it with, not anything constructive. They don't need to be around us for anything constructive. Uh, they don't have any need in that, in that way, but, so that alone should, should raise suspicions on why some white person would be in our midst, but we have not developed that understanding as of yet, and, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Gus, can I add, um, something after, um, I wanted to touch on, follow up with some of that, um, firefighter set, retired firefighter?
Do we miss anybody? Anybody else have commentary that they wanted to make sure they got in?
Um, yes, can I?
I think that's our caller in California. Yes, sir.
Um, I, 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 um, I'm, I hope I'm, um, remembering correctly, but the, uh, victim of racism, Emmanuel, I suspect that the way that, um, he was described was, um, um, definitely practicing racism and white supremacy. I don't know, how, uh, did they determine that he had needle marks and it's, or was it the coroner who said that, and is he, is he trained to detect such things? Did they have a doctor come down and do that? I suspect that that was simply just done to, um, yeah, degrade and, um, victimize him further and to justify, somewhat justify and, and definitely minimize, um, what should be done about, um, the killings. And on the twenty-two caliber, I know, um, that the Ruger pistol, which is a, um, German Nazi weapon, I know that takes that ammunition, so, um, do we know if he was using that pistol? Because that could be very symbolic as well and telling.
I think, as we get, and again, I haven't read this book, but I think the, the ballistics and all that will become very important. This is kind of a lengthy book, so I suspect she's gonna go into a lot of the details in terms of the trial and how they tied all of these killings together, so I'm sure we're gonna get lots of details about the exact, uh, type of firearm, the exact rounds and all of that, and if it's not included, uh, I have so many supplementary, uh, material that some of that information is probably already posted online. I just would need to double-check to be sure. Was that it? Caller in California? Or I guess, okay. Grand. Uh, let's see, victim in New Jersey, was it? I think he said he had, uh, extra sentence or two he wanted to, to sneak in.
Yeah, um, retired firefighter said something about, you know, basically, um, and you also, uh, said about black people not having a healthy, uh, suspicion of white people, um, all, in New Jersey, uh, in the nineties, I noticed a patterning of, um, white Mormons that used to just walk up and down the street, I guess, trying to convert, um, Negroes into the Mormon faith. Um, was there something that anybody else, I'm just curious, did anybody else experience, um, the Mormons, like during the nineties and, uh, further, um, in their part of the world and predominantly black areas?
I, I can go back to, I can go back to months ago, where the, uh, uh, a couple of white, uh, young males, uh, who are Mormons riding on bicycles, uh, uh, within walking distance, uh, of me. Uh, out on one of the main, uh, streets in Miami Gardens, so it's not unusual. They, 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 right in the midst of where non-white black people consider to be, I gotta have my head on the swivel for other black people. You would see white people riding around, riding around on bicycles. So, yeah, that, that's not unusual.
In the neighborhood, I grew up in the south side of Chicago, there's a Mormon church.
And in Miami Gardens, if not a Mormon church, nowhere to be found. Wearing white, what, young white males wearing white shirts, uh, dark trousers, uh, sometimes wearing ties, uh, no suspensions at all. And like I said, the, the recent, the recent, uh, race soldier in his manifesto, which I've been reading, uh, describes, describes that, that, uh, trust very vividly. He definitely understands the trust that black people have for him. There's a black male that's, that has been constantly had been on the news recently from that, uh, situation that he actually had about an hour and a half talk with the killer the, the night before. Friday, I, I would assume.
Yes, you, you are correct. He even referenced, uh, the killer as a genius because of the conversation that they had.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Okay, I, I just wanted to know because, you know, I've always found that suspicious, even in my- in my early years, uh, growing up. That's all I got. Thanks, Gus.
Much obliged. Caller in New Jersey. One of our investors, uh, wrote in, uh, his notes for chapter three. Uh, Leo Donovan, chief of homicide, had an analytical mind and penchant for deciphering the logic in situations there appeared none, traits that all non-white victims should adopt absolutely, using logic to solve problems. Number two, that day's late edition of the Buffalo Evening News, which is, uh, still in operation, I think it's just the Buffalo News now, but same thing, ran a story with the headline, "Two More Executed, Police Look For Link." Before the day was done, there was no longer any doubt. The police lab determined that bullets retrieved from the bodies of Glenn Dunn, Emmanuel Thomas, and Harold Green had all been fired from the same twenty-two caliber weapon. Seems like the police should have immediately called a televised press conference to alert black males that they may be in danger. Now, again, this was happening at the same time as the Atlanta child murders. I think by this point, they had already called a press conference or many to talk about black children being in danger. Many of them black males, but that was, you know, black girls, black, it's not even a correct title. They had older black boys and all kinds of things. Anyway, so I think such a press conference had already been called, just not for Buffalo. But I think some of that's going to come out because, oh, man, when the details did come out, wow. I think I read this past Sunday, they had a march in Buffalo where they said two thousand people marched about this and racism. Again, how has that not been mentioned in the last five days? Like, we had thousands of people marching in Buffalo about this exact same problem. And that's not even worth, uh, you know? Oh, yeah, that did happen. Yeah. Hmm. Let's see. Some of the notes that I took and then we'll wrap up for this week. Uh, be back for next week. We'll have even more information by then. If anybody has the manifesto, well, so-called manifesto, if anybody has it, you can just drop me an email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Thank you kindly. The notes for chapter three, uh, let's see. So we start off with a totally different black male being killed, Joseph McCoy. Now, I've been saying, uh, consistently, J. Strom Thurmond lived to a hundred, almost a hundred and one. He's walk everywhere as he may, everywhere you can, eat healthy foods and all the rest of it. So Joseph McCoy, he says, I, hey, I'm gonna do that. No fear of walking the streets. Made a habit of walking every day, setting out from his home on Pierce Avenue in Niagara Falls for a leisurely stroll. Unfortunately, system of white supremacy, you kind of have to be alert all the time. Even, well, anytime really, but especially right now, given everything. But I mean, kind of have to be alert. That's why I've been saying that, like, and we've been talking about, hey, suspicion of white people, really suspicion of anybody where you get that sense, hey, something is not right, something is up. Just being mindful, being alert, paying attention, talk about not having those headphones on, not being on the cell phone and just kind of mindless as you are out and about in a world that is dominated by white terrorism. I think a number of these folks, uh, said that this white man came up and asked, you know, for information. Hey, do you know Dorothy or Deborah or whatever it is? Or, you know, that type of a thing. Hey, do you know where this is? You know where this store is? That sort of thing. Perhaps that's something to think about. You're out in public, individual classified as white or even a stranger, you know, comes up and is, you know, hey, can I, you know, bum a cigarette? You got a dollar? Do you know where, you know, such and such address is? Do you know where, you know, Reginald is? Hey, I don't know nothing. I'm out of here. It's two thousand twenty-two. Like, hey, back in this time, you didn't have smartphones and all the rest of it. Like, you don't need to ask me nothing. Alexa, where is? They will knock it out. Like, you don't need to ask me anything. You can whip out that phone, Zoom call, even when the Rona, when everything was shut down, you can still whip out that phone and bam, you got the whole world at your fingertips. They got ten-year-olds with the phone. So do you really need to be talking to me about anything? They said that's what Peyton Gendron was doing. They said he was at the store the day before the shooting, talking to people, bumming quarters. What did I just say? Bumming quarters. Hey, what's going wrong, bro? He could have carried the shooting out that day. I think they said some reports he may have intended to have carried it out that day and then waited or whatever. But either way, and I think it was the black, uh, teller at Tops previously mentioned, she said she asked him to leave. She thought something was up with him. What is this guy doing? Why is he hanging around? And again, white people, they don't have food deserts. You don't have to hang out here at Tops around the Negroes. What are you doing here? Something to think about. Again, now, all of this is predicated on understanding, oh, system of white supremacy racism, I'm classified as black, it's fun to kill Negroes. Got it. Need to keep that in mind. Most of us, we are confused, which does make it way easier in many instances. Uh, continuing. He doesn't have a job. Now, I didn't, you know, that he had been unemployed. I just took that as an indictment of white supremacy racism. I think all the critiques that you all raised are valid because I think, hey, this could be by many people just read as, oh, this is another worthless Negro, just like Zachariah Walker. That's what they said about him, worthless Negro after he was lynched and butchered, carried his finger around in their pocket for a week, but he's a worthless Negro, so who cares? It could have that same sort of effect, but if you understand white supremacy racism or is, you know, the people who are most to blame for this, hey, race soldiers, they decide if we're going to have a job or not. We just heard about, read about, uh, Julius Williams. He graduated from law school and he couldn't get a job. So I mean, that's just, hey, and black males, it seems in particular, that's just how it is sometimes. We just don't give Negroes jobs. So, you know, hey, that's just what we got, uh, Mr. McCoy included. Uh, and even with that, they didn't say that he was worthless, roustabout, robbing people, raping. They didn't say that. Tried to stay fit, take care of himself and eh, can't even go out and enjoy Niagara Falls. Uh, we already included Love Canal. One of the witnesses just thought that this was guys joking around until she sees the paper bag to the black male's head and two shots fired. White man flees down Cleveland Avenue. I I mean, now, this was, you know, sometime earlier. I don't know if a black male could be going and just grabbing white people. Some of these, they said the Burger King, uh, that was like broad daylight. I don't know if you could just be Harold Green, that was the Burger King, I think that was the second one. I don't think you could just be going out and shooting people in broad daylight and then just running. And I, like we were saying, I think they would have been more active. Like, I don't, I don't think he would have gotten even this far, just running on foot. Like, especially what we heard in Lucky, like, oh, my God, there were baseball bat wielding whites ready to go out immediately and, you know, nab up even the closest Negro. Uh, let's see. Emmanuel Thomas, uh, same thing where y'all talked about him being on drugs and all of that, uh, totally valid. I just indicted the usual suspects. Now, where did he get these drugs from? Hmm, usual suspects. And even it seems he was trying to get rid of that. They said he went to rehab and all that, like, he didn't just succumb and, oh, well, like, hey, I'm gonna try and do right and attempted family member and all that. Eh, eh, worthless Negro. Uh, when they went to give in some of the, the, and again, uh, this fellow comes in, hey, do you know Dorothy or Deborah or Diane or whatever it is? Maybe we should think about that. Some folks might say, oh, my God, you're as bad as a racist. That's how I'd be conditioned to think, you're as bad as a, what do you mean? So if some white person comes, you're just not gonna, you're gonna ignore them. Oh, my God, that's. Somebody, I think it was retired, do white people really need to talk to me about anything? Mm-hmm. Uh, let's see. When they got into some of the details of the enforcement officials, I don't know if the Atlanta child murders is going to be mentioned in this book. I have to look. I almost feel like if it's not mentioned, that might be another, uh, like demerit. Well, okay, yes, indeedy, gonna be mentioned, but yeah, how could you tell this story with it? That is crazy. I don't even know what to say. That is so crazy. Uh, yeah, keep, put a pin in that. The person who asked, like, why didn't they hold a press conference? Pin in that. I have to go back to see how many press conferences they had already had about the child murders by this point. Uh, this is nineteen, as a matter of fact, nineteen eighty, they might not have even had press conferences by eighty. I have to go back and check. I suspect they did because it had been going on for, at that point, two years. So I suspect that they would have. Bounty might have been up. Muhammad Ali might have been involved at that point. Like, it might have been a really big deal, but we'll have to see how it comes up here. But keep a pin in that about press conference. Uh, the Irish police, uh, roots that we just talked about, all of that, the galvanizing force of white supremacy racism, and especially for New York, that is a long tradition all the way back to World War Two, Irish, uh, migrants making it clear, we are about the union, not the Negro. You can go back in the Cows archives and get more detail on that. We'll pause there. Um, yeah, I'm so glad that we are reading this book. Uh, we have lots more details to go. Uh, what important information to be reading and at this particular time, oh, best thing ever. I'm so excited. Uh, anyhow, we'll be here tomorrow for neutralizing workplace racism at eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific, uh, and then certainly we'll have more about the Buffalo, the current Buffalo incident, uh, this Saturday compensatory call-in. Uh, feel free to drop an email if you're listening, uh, over the week, untiljustice@gmail.com. And again, uh, there is a black newspaper in Buffalo, the Challenger Community News, the Challenger Community News. Uh, it, I think it used to be the Buffalo Challenger, but they Buffalo Challenge, but they changed the name. So it's the Challenger Community News. It's online. They have some of their older content. I think they're going to be posting their content from the nineteen eighties about this case, which I think is so important to see what black publications, since we're saying, hey, this Catherine Catherine Pelanero, she is classified as white, to hear what black authors wrote about this at that time, I think is so important. I called them today while I was at the beach. I was not just sitting with my feet up, sipping lemonade. I was on the grind. Uh, so I called from the beach and they were trying to get their publication out and I'm, you know, harassing them and all that. And they said, if you give us some time, we'll photocopy all of the material that we have from that time period on this case and we'll email it to you. Once I get it, I will share. Again, facebook.com forward slash the problem is white people. And on Twitter, at untiljustice. I've been posting lots of the archived content that I got from the library, uh, that's like the New York Times, Jet Magazine, uh, the Buffalo News, lots of other sources from that time period. Uh, and then I'll add to it once I get the material, uh, from tomorrow. But I think this is so important. Uh, if you have offspring, uh, this is the way that I would talk to my children about this incident. Like, let's go back and look at this, what happened before? Why do we think that this is not being included in the material now? And how does this help us have a better understanding about all of these events, what it means to be white, racism, white supremacy? Anywho, let me know if you need the book, uh, and or, as I said, want to check out any of the archive content that's online or should be more material to come. Uh, with that, sobriety, for all the reasons that we heard here, sobriety would be best. Not to mention that they'll just come and blend, oh, he smoked cigarettes, he deserved it, he's a worthless Negro, see, drug addict, crack addict, all the rest of it, uh, lots of reasons. Most importantly, we need high functioning brain computers to solve this problem. In addition to being sober, when you're out and about, trust your brain computer. And I mean, in all facets, you get in the vehicle, even if it's your home, and he says, this is a stolen car. Whoop, 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 that's my stop right here. Much obliged. I think you should park this car, dip, but let me wipe my fingerprints off real quick. I am out. I will talk to you way later. Peace. Making great decisions and that includes, hey, I'm out and about, individual classified as white that I don't know comes up, hey, do you know who Deborah is? Do you know where Diane? It's two thousand twenty-two. You should have her text, you can text Deborah, you can Zoom her, all kinds of things. There should be no reason you gotta come talk to some random strange Negro for anything. Maybe that is the more logical, safe way to approach out in public. If you get any sort of sense that something is not quite right about this person, this situation, trust your instinct. That's such a big part of white supremacy racism. We are constantly undermined. They'll call it gaslighting or what have you, where we just are are conditioned to doubt ourselves. You get that sense that something is wrong? Believe it. You can investigate and figure it out and what have you, but you are probably getting that sense for a reason. If you're in a vehicle, you're sober, you're buckled up, you're not on a cell phone, doing the small things that we can to minimize contact with race soldiers and we need all of our attention. That's it. Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in. Again, the Challenger Community News, importance of black journalism. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.